All please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you to guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interest and conflict of interest where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? There being none, I will now move to confirmation of minutes. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,591st meeting, held on Tuesday the 28th of May 2019, be received, taken, as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks. The minutes of the 4,591st meeting held on, of council held on the 28th of May 2019 be received, taken, as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We have some public participants today, and if Mrs. Kylie Newbury would care to come to the speaking point for us, and she's going to be having a discussion with us today about the benefits of localised food systems and urban agriculture. Ms. Newbury, I trust that people have discussed with you how it works, how the system works. You have five minutes. You're free to sit or stand and begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Lord Mayor and councillors, do you know we're really lucky? Food is abundant, it's readily available, it's in our supermarkets, our corner stores, our cafes and restaurants. Until it's not, we take it for granted so much that it's impossible to even consider a future that looks any different. And yet, the future of Brisbane's food supply is at risk, and we need to act now in order to prevent a crisis. Now, I know what you're thinking, how can I possibly predict the future? And you're right, I can't. I can't foresee our future. But what I can do is look at what is happening right now and the impact that is going to have on our future. Our earth's temperature is getting hotter. You only have to have lived through Brisbane's last summer to know how hot it's getting. Droughts are becoming more frequent, they're lasting for longer and they're more severe. We're seeing an increase in the number of extreme weather events and natural disasters due to our changing climate. Not only do these extreme weather events put increasing pressure on our farmers to grow our food, but they also disrupt our supply chains which distribute our food. Throw in more mouse to feed due to our growing population and we create the perfect storm, literally. I hear you. You're thinking that this is something that you're never going to experience in your lifetime, certainly not before next council election. And you're right, it's true that food may still be readily available in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years, but here's the thing, we can't actually guarantee that, which is what makes it so important. At some point, our changing weather is going to affect what food is available in our city, how affordable it is and how easy it is to access. But the good news is that we can do something that builds our resilience. We can bring food back into the city. In fact, cities around the world are recognising the importance of growing food close to where the majority of people live. The fancy term for it is urban agriculture. It includes community gardens, verge gardens and rooftop gardens, backyard beehives, food mostly grown for personal consumption. But it also includes city farms, which provide paid and volunteer jobs, they increase the city's food security, they stimulate the local economy by circulating income in the city, and they create valuable green spaces. Sure, there's lots of benefits to growing food in the city, but I'm guessing you're also wondering about the risks. The top two risks that need to be at the top of your list are summer heatwaves and hungry people. The wonderful news is that Brisbane City Council are already doing many of these things. You have 22 community gardens and community composting facilities, you allow verge gardens and rooftop gardens. Most importantly, the community have told you that they want more green space and they want more things to see and do in Brisbane's future blueprint, which is fantastic because growing food in the city has enormous benefits. It cools the urban heat island effect, it decreases carbon emissions, which provides a cooler environment and reduces energy intensity, it provides opportunities for social connections, it increases our food resilience, it provides safe havens for biodiverse species, it increases the livability and vibrancy of our city, and it also enhances our diet which improves our health. So what else could you do to make our city clean, green and sustainable? I'm asking for three things. One, I would like Brisbane City Council to flourish with rooftop gardens. As urban density increases and we lose a lot of our green spaces, we need to make use of all available green space in order to grow more food. Two, I would like Brisbane City Council to protect the remaining urban farmland or rural zone land. As our population grows, so do the number of mouse to feed. We need to support and preserve our existing peri-urban farms because we can access food closer to home, increasing our resilience. And three, I would like Brisbane City Council to appoint a Sustainable Food Programme manager who, among other things, will plan, develop and implement policies and programmes that advance local sustainable agriculture and a vibrant food economy. By making this a priority for Brisbane, you will be seen as a visionary and leader in Australia with a strong focus on greening the city, cooling the city and feeding the city. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all. Some of you I know, many of you I don't. It is an absolute pleasure to address you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Newbury. Would you like to have a seat there? And councillor Hammond, could you please respond?
Thank you very much, Kylie, for coming in and addressing council. As I briefly spoke to you outside, I told you that my husband is a farmer in the food bowl. So farming to me and agriculture is extremely important. My family has grown up in that background and I can see a lot of opportunities for us in Brisbane. As you know and rightfully said, we go to the shopping centres and supermarkets and see readily available food. That's why this council is putting the programme of the Love Food Hate Waste Programme and educating our young ones at schools about this very important issue. What you said about farming, about the difference, the droughts and then the floods and the different changes, farming is forever changing and has often had many challenges. To be a farmer, you have to adapt to the change and look at different alternatives. There is many different ways of farming that reduce the amount of impact to our land and around. You rightfully said about the city farms, I'm so lucky on the north side to probably have one of the best, unfortunately I think it's in councillor Wine's area, but one of the best city farms which is North East Street. This council support these city farms through our grant programmes. We also have the wonderful community gardens. We've invested and educate through our libraries, just in my own library at the Grange, we have, we don't call it a community garden, we call it a share garden, where people are welcome to come in, grow their produce and share it with the community, but more importantly, educate the community about this. Composting, we have a major composting push in this city with our composting caddies and the places that you can deposit them in our local communities. You said about people wanting more green space, I couldn't agree with you more. That's why this side of the chamber, under this Lord Mayor, we have purchased over 700 hectares of bushland and we are committed to buying more parkland and green space across this city. You also mentioned about having the rooftop gardens. We're actually amending the city plan, which is something that you could probably talk to councillor Burke in further detail about, to facilitate this, to facilitate the rooftop gardens, to actually open up that space again. I am dedicated in this role to continue educating people about different ways that you can have more sustainable living at home. We encourage people to have farms in their backyard. I will admit, even though I'm married to a farmer, I'm not the farmer, okay? I struggle with my growing. But we encourage people to do that in their own backyard, to produce their own goods for themselves. We also encourage people or allow people to have chooks in the backyard, which is not only a good way to get your eggs and produce, it's a great way to educate little ones about caring for the environment and actually understanding where food comes from and how you care for those animals. Urban agriculture would be something that we'd encourage in this city, and it is encouraged under city plan. However, it has to be in the right location, and usually those locations are close to markets. We support non-for-profit city farms across our city, so if you were looking at something more commercial, then that would be something for a private investor to have a look at. But I'm more than happy to have a talk with you and have a meeting with you later because I am really, really passionate about this space. Thank you so much for coming in.
Mrs. Newbury, thank you for your time. Billy's going to help escort you to the front door. And thank you for coming. All right. Can I draw the council's attention to the second public participant, Mr. Alan Main, who will be here to discuss the Brisbane Cable Car Project? Now, Mr. Main, you're welcome to stand or sit, whichever is your preference. I trust that the process has been discussed with you in advance. The time is here, and please begin when you're ready.
Could I ask if any, did you all get, please?
I believe that they have been distributed, have all councillors got, and also I think the earlier speaker also had some notes that should have been on your table when you arrived. Thank you. Please begin.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lord Mayor, councillors, about 13 years ago, Premier Anna Bly asked the public for ideas to boost tourism. She asked the public for ideas, she asked for an iconic tourist project, and that's what I thought of. I thought of a cable car running around Brisbane in a circle and going up to the top of the Story Bridge. And the first of my photos shows the Story Bridge, and the second of my photo shows what I could see is the cable car going up to the top. As well as this, it would connect Queen Street Mall to the Cultural Centre and to the South Bank. My proposed route for the cable car is on the third piece of paper. From high above the existing Queen Street Mall, 10 metres up, the cable car would glide over the river next to the Victoria Bridge. It would turn left in front of the Cultural Centre and over the parklands. It would follow the river over and above the Kangaroo Point cliffs. It would reach to the top of the Story Bridge. After the Story Bridge, it would glide high over Kemp Place. It would turn left around All Hallows College into Anne Street. It would then fork left into Queen Street and follow Queen Street back to the Queen Street Mall. This kind of project would indeed be iconic. The views of our city from the top of the Story Bridge are incredible. The views of our city as you glide along Kangaroo Point cliffs are unforgettable. I think this would be a world first tourist project. I have never seen a cable car going up to the top of a bridge, and as well as that, going around a circle of the city. This would be a major tourist attraction, not just for Brisbane, but for Queensland and for Australia. As well as the tourism focus, thousands of people would be transported around our city, and especially from the city to South Bank and return. The cable car would connect the Queen Street Mall to the Cultural Centre and South Bank Parklands and to the Valley and Chinatown. Initially, I suggest three stations. Station one, the Queen Street Mall station, say 10 metres above the existing Queen Street Mall, escalators and lifts taking passengers from street level at the mall to the raised platform. Station two would be at the Cultural Centre, it would be the Cultural Centre station, and station three would be at the Valley. The cost of such a project would be large, but I can see the potential for very large corporate advertising. Qantas, Emirates, Lexus, who knows? Brisbane could have something special in the order of magnitude of the Melbourne Cup, but our something special would be here every day of the year. The possible mathematics, the entire circuit that I've thought of is a five and a half kilometre loop. If it travelled at 10 kilometres per hour, and if one gondola or one car held 20 people and there was one car every 200 metres, then the time for one complete loop of the circuit would be 39 minutes. The time between Queen Street and the Cultural Centre is six minutes. This would provide 1,000 people per hour pass the points in each direction. This is a lot of people who could be transported across the river from the city to the South Bank and back, all this without affecting the existing infrastructure and traffic on the ground. In fact, such a cable car as this would reduce both the vehicles and pedestrian traffic below. I have available USB sticks that I prepared years ago, and I'd love to distribute them if anyone is interested. Also, if anyone's interested in contacting me, I've got business cards that I'm happy to give out. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to present this to you, and I'm very willing to answer questions both now and in the future about this project.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Main. Can I invite the deputy mayor to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Main, for coming in this afternoon. Thank you for sharing your vision and obviously your passion for the cable car. We're very committed here too, passionate about our vision for Brisbane, about a place that is fantastic to work, live and play, and I suppose visit as well. And I think what you're talking about today is something that definitely fits into our vision of a visitor economy that encourages more people to come and visit Brisbane as well. We have just had an enormous year for our visitor economy. We have had record-breaking visitor numbers come to Brisbane. We've had a record number of events and major events that have come to the city, and we are always looking for entrepreneurs, young and old, like yourself, that come up with ideas that may be able to be included into that vision that we have at the city. We are actually working through Brisbane Marketing at the moment on a visitor economy strategy to 2031, and holding a summit over the next day with the Lord Mayor, with the industry, to discuss the opportunities that we have in the tourism industry. We know we're on the cusp of being a worldwide known name, and we want to take the opportunity to do the best we can when we get that name as well. As I said, we've got a tourism sector that is very much working together at the moment. I'm actually hosting a Tourism Project Reference Group, that is a cross-government group that has city, regional and state focus, so we are looking at all these opportunities, I'm a hand talker, sorry, all these opportunities of different ideas and things that we could actually do in Brisbane. We know that, as I said, the industry are working together and we're getting a great outcome from that, but we're also very keen to see what else we could do to boost that visitor economy as well. And we do realise a part of that is making sure we have experiences. A cable car would be definitely once in a Queensland opportunity for the type that you're talking about. Our tourism and events team are actually working really closely to engage with people like yourself, to talk about your ideas, your visions, how we can support you, how we may be able to make that vision come true, and in particularly with concessionable product, because the wonderful thing we have about Brisbane is there's so much free stuff to do, there is so much to see and do, but we need to have stuff that actually might have a ticket to it, so our tourism industry wants to come along and have some concessionable product as well to come and visit. So look, I am more than happy to talk to you offline, take one of those business cards, get you in touch with the Tourism Events Team at Brisbane Marketing, to get you into the loop and start the conversations and see what opportunities there are for where you're suggesting or other opportunities for cable cars as a visitor economy strategy. Thanks for coming in today, Mr. Main.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Main. Thank you. Billy will escort you. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Councillor's now begins question time. Are there any questions to the Lord Mayor or Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Cunningham.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, council has now implemented multiple amendments to city plan 2014, following extensive consultation with residents through Brisbane's Future Blueprint process. Can you update the chamber on the progress of further changes to be made?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham, for the question, and you rightly pointed out that since last year, when we released Brisbane's Future Blueprint, which included eight guiding principles and 40 action items, we've been very deliberately and methodically working through those action items to implement them, and many of those are well underway, and we will continue to work through to deliver on those actions, because this is a blueprint put together by the community for a better Brisbane. It is a blueprint for Brisbane's future, guided by the community, where the community was involved and consulted, and indeed an award-winning process as well, that has not only achieved national recognition, but also wider afield and further afield than that as well. And the recommendations here include a lot relating to particular tweaks to development, changes to development principles in the city plan, and one of them is relating to the provision of car parking in suburban developments. And so that was part of the agenda of getting people home quicker and safer with more travel options. And number two, the recommendation of Brisbane's Future Blueprint was to increase the car parking requirements for development in suburban areas. So based on that community feedback that we received, we are acting on that today. And so we're taking the first step in that process today to increase the car parking requirements in suburban developments. And what we will see today is...
Answers will be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we will see today is going forward, a very clear approach from council that if you are building a one-bedroom unit, then you must provide one car park. If you are building a two-bedroom unit, you must provide two car parks. And so this is a very clear principle we got from the community, saying that in many of these two-bedroom developments out in the suburbs, there was not enough parking being provided. And so we have listened and we are acting on that. So what we will see now is going forward, if you have a two-bedroom development, it must have two car parks going forward. We've also taken steps to increase the amount of visitor parking as well. Another component of feedback clearly provided by the community, because what they are seeing is as new developments occur, as people are moving into areas, some of this car parking is spilling out onto local streets and causing concerns for local residents, causing issues with parking and traffic ingestion. And so we are taking action in response to that community feedback, and that will see going forward amendments to the plan to enshrine that two-bedroom, two-car parking spaces principle, and also the increase in visitor parking spaces as well. Now, this will apply right across Brisbane with the exception of the CBD and the city frame, so just those very inner-city areas in the city frame and the CBD will have a different regime, but the rest of the city, right across, all the way out to the boundary of the city, will have this new regime implemented. And as I said, this is about making sure we're responsive to the community, that we provide appropriate guidance to the development industry, that parking needs to be provided to meet community expectations. Now, there's also a consideration of additional parking where there are units of three bedrooms or four bedrooms, but that basic principle of two bedrooms and two car spaces was one that we got overwhelming feedback on. Now, we know if you have a three-bedroom apartment, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are three different people living there. Many people do use that third bedroom for multiple uses, such as a home office and other types of uses, so just having three bedrooms doesn't necessarily mean there are three people living there, but definitely that principle from the community is two bedrooms, two car spaces. The principle from the community that we also listen to is increasing visitor spaces, visitor car parking spaces in new development, so that we get a reduction of the issue of the cars spilling out onto the local streets adding to parking concerns in local streets. So we are taking this action. This is the first step that needs to be taken in the process of going forward with this proposed amendment, and we're getting on with it. Obviously, there will be more community consultation done as part of this. There will also be consultation required and approval needed from the state government. And I certainly hope that that process goes smoother than the townhouse amendments that were proposed around eight months ago.
Further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, just last month, a US court awarded a $2 billion judgment against the manufacturers of glyphosate-containing weed killer Roundup. This has led to several Australian councils and state governments to review the use of glyphosate. Several in Sydney have phased out its use. Council currently uses glyphosate-containing herbicides in parks, playgrounds, footpaths and green spaces. In light of the reported links of glyphosate to cancer, will you phase out the use of chemical glyphosate in Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cumming, and look, thank you for the question, and one that is indeed a topical one. I must admit, to be fully upfront with you, I was out in my yard on the weekend using this product in my yard. So there is a role for it, and it must be done safely and used appropriately. When it comes to council, I can tell you, we will be having a look at our use of this product. It is something we'll be keeping a close eye on, and if there are things that we can do to make sure that we respond to developments that are happening elsewhere and information that comes to light, then I can assure you that we will be taking a close look at that and making sure that our workers are safe and our community is safe. That is our absolute priority. So at the moment, council uses this product not indiscriminately, it is used by suitably trained staff for targeted weed control only, and it is in line with the labelled recommendations. It is used in situations such as concrete curb and channel weeds. And as you know, in our subtropical climate, we do get weeds growing up through the cracks in curb and channel, and it is used in situations such as that. There are those situations where it is used, but to answer your question, councillor Cumming, we are happy to have a look at our practices because our priority is the safety of our staff and the safety of our community. So thank you for the question. I expect that I will be in a position to provide you with a further update in the foreseeable future on the use of this product, and as I say, it is a very topical matter at the moment and one that we're having a look at.
Other questions?
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move suspension of so much of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion, that the Brisbane City Council immediately begins phasing out the use of glyphosate-containing herbicides.
Seconded.
It's, an urgency motion has been sought by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook. Councillor Cassidy, three minutes to urgency, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is extremely urgent because there is mounting evidence now that glyphosate-containing herbicides are in fact linked to several cancers. We've now seen significant judgments in overseas jurisdictions, we just heard a $2 billion judgment in the United States, where an established link was made between lymphoma and the use of glyphosate-containing herbicides. There have been these landmark judgments, and now there are people, not just overseas, but here in Australia, who are talking about the potential for class action suits for the use of glyphosate. So we don't think there's a day to waste in beginning to phase out the use of these chemicals. I don't know that there are many councillors here that wouldn't have people in their communities that have raised concerns with them about this use. The Lord Mayor just said that it's used on curbing and channeling. I know for a fact that it's used in playgrounds, around play equipment, in green spaces, in our natural habitat areas.
Just to urgency, councillor Cassidy, please.
It needs to stop, Mr. Chair. So that's what we need to do today. That's why it's urgent. We have other jurisdictions, such as the Victorian State Government, who are currently reviewing that use formally, not just saying they'll look at it, formally doing that. The Fairfield City Council has phased it out in Sydney already. The Georges River Council is about to stop using it, and Willoughby, Cooringai, Sutherland and Waverley councils are also going through that process right now. So the evidence is clear that exposed use of glyphosate-containing herbicides can lead to cancer. We should have the safety of our council employees front and centre when it comes to this issue, but also the community. I don't know that many people want their children running around a playground that has just been sprayed with a chemical, glyphosate-containing herbicides, without any warning. has just been sprayed with a chemical, glyphosate-containing herbicides, without any warning. So we don't even have warnings in Brisbane this is being used, but we think, given the mounting evidence there is now that it's actually quite urgent, that a council size of Brisbane City Council takes the lead on this and actually phases out the use of glyphosate-containing herbicides. We heard in the 60s and 70s how safe tobacco was, how safe asbestos was. They used to say that some of these chemicals were so safe you could drink them. I think the evidence now is very clear that they are not in fact safe for exposed use by staff and also in use in places where children are playing and where the broader community is supposed to be enjoying this clean, green city that we hear about from this Lord Mayor all the time. Well, take a lead, Lord Mayor, and phase out its use.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. All those in favour of urgency, say aye.
Aye.
And to contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division call by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cumming. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. The voting being seven in favour and eighteen against.
The noes have it. Please return to your seats. Excuse me. We'll now return to question time. There is 36 minutes remaining. Councillor Toomey, your question, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Committee, councillor Burke. Councillor Burke, can you give an update on the Shriner administration's commitment to ban townhouses in low-density residential zone land? Have there been any recent developments? Pardon the pun.
Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, and I thank councillor Toomey for the question. It's a very timely question too, councillor Toomey, given the developments we just heard from the Lord Mayor in his answer to the previous question. As councillors would know, this council undertook the largest public engagement exercise of its kind ever undertaken in this country when we undertook Plan Your Brisbane, which flowed on and out into Brisbane's Future Blueprint. And one of the key recommendations out of Brisbane's Future Blueprint was to ban townhouses in low-density residential areas across this city. So dutifully committed to delivering the blueprint as we are, we introduced an amendment, a major amendment back into this place in September last year. And councillors would be well aware of the history around that major amendment and some of the political games that were played by the Labor councillors in this place at the time when we brought that particular major amendment in. Well, it is my great pleasure this afternoon, it's my great pleasure this afternoon, to let the chamber know that the minister has approved our major amendment so it can now go to consultation. He's approved the major amendment. I want to thank the minister for his considered approach to this important issue for the residents of Brisbane because it was very clear from the feedback that we had from the residents that this was of concern to them. Got to remember, Mr. Chair, through you, to all those in the council chamber, that this was a provision that the Labor Party first introduced 40 years ago into our planning scheme. And this administration has listened to the residents of Brisbane and is now removing or seeking to remove those provisions that would allow townhouse developments on area-zone low-density residential over 3,000 square metres. There is some detailed conditions that have been placed on us as part of the minister's approval, and we will go about our job of making sure that we fulfil each and every one of those. We will host talk-to-a-planner sessions, one on the south side, one on the north side, and one in the CBD, Mr. Chair, so that residents can be informed about this amendment, so that they can understand what the provisions are and how it may affect their communities and may affect their block of land, Mr. Chair. We'll do direct engagement with the industry as well because it's important. It's important that everyone has their say on this particular issue, Mr. Chairman, and so we'll be going out over the coming months and carrying out that engagement. The minister has set us 20 business days for the engagement to be carried out, and we will be complying with all of our requirements as part of that. But what the minister's approval has shown, Mr. Chair, is that all of the Labor parties in this place's attempts to undermine, to play political games when it comes to this important change is just that. We called them out at the time, much to the dislike of the Australian Labor Party on the other side, when they tried to move TLPIs. Like, oh, let's move a TLPI, Mr. Chair, this is the way we do it. Well, the minister said no. He said, no, it's not a TLPI matter. He said you should go through a normal planning scheme, remember, and that's why he approved it. I mean, the Labor Party's answer to everything in this place when it comes to planning, Mr. Chair, is to slap a TLPI on it. I mean, honestly, if councillor Sutton, the former councillor for Morningside, was in this place, they wouldn't be doing this because she understood planning. I think she was the last person in the Australian Labor Party in this place who actually understood planning and how a planning scheme actually worked, Mr. Chair. Those councillors opposite don't. What they see when it comes to planning in this city is political gain, and we've seen it demonstrated. Because the whole process around this particular amendment and their constant calls for TLPIs and the mock outrage when we voted it down and said, no, we are going to do the right thing by going through the consultative process that a major amendment allows us to go through, they said no. They wanted to shut people out of that opportunity, Mr. Chairman, because they're not interested in the people of Brisbane. They're interested in the politics of a matter. Whatever it takes to get onto this side of the chamber, Mr. Chair, is what the Australian Labor Party is prepared to do. They don't want to engage with people. They don't want to have a discussion. And I'm just glad that the minister, their state Labor colleagues, understand the importance of engaging with the residents when it comes to planning on issues like this. And that's why we've welcomed the minister's approval of us now to go to the next stage of consultation on major H because the residents provided that clear feedback. The residents have told us that they don't like seeing large townhouse developments occurring in areas of the city that are designated for low-density residential, and we are responding, Mr. Chair. We're not playing the petty political games that those opposites seem to like to play. Councillor Sutton, when she was in this place, would never have stood for those sort of political games when it comes to issues like this. But for some reason, Mr. Chair, the current Australian Labor Party councillors in this place think that they can put politics before the people of Brisbane. Well, on this side, Mr. Chair, we're more interested.
Councillor Burke. Time's expired. Further questions? councillor Johnston.
Yep, that was a stunning effort. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's been one year since council announced the Ipswich Road corridor review. What are the outcomes or recommendations?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Johnston. That review is not yet complete, but certainly when that work is complete, we will be doing what we always do, which is making sure the community is aware of the outcomes of that work. We acknowledge that, we acknowledge this is something you're interested in and we thank you for that. And that is something that this administration is also interested in, which is why we are doing this work in the first place. So I can't say much more beyond that, but when the work is completed and when there is information to go out to the community on, we will be sure to initiate that process.
Further questions? councillor Richards.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, council celebrated the 10th anniversary of Greenheart Fairs with a fair held at Chirmside this past Sunday. Can you outline some of the sustainable initiatives we have in place as part of Environment Day on 5th of June?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Richards for the question. Greenheart Fair celebrated its 10th year on Sunday with over 20 Greenheart Fairs being done over the last 10 years. These fairs are helping create a clean and green Brisbane. Brisbane's Greenheart Fair provides initiatives that are easy ideas about sustainability around the home and to reduce the environmental footprint and reduce your cost of living. Keeping Brisbane clean and green is all about making our city a great place to live. These fairs aim to cater for everybody, from hand-on workshops to inspiring speakers, delicious street food, and enjoyable live music. Our Greenheart Fairs have been inspiring residents of Brisbane to reduce waste at home, as the Clean Away Waste Zone highlighted, ways to reduce, refuse, rethink the way we do waste. I had the great pleasure on the weekend to meet and introduce the well-known war on waste Craig Rue Castle. He was an amazing speaker and has inspired so many people across our city to rethink our waste. We also saw the zero-waste blogger Lindsay Miles from the trending My Own Path. It was great to hear both of these gentlemen speak about their passions. We have always been supportive of residents to plant native trees, and over the weekend on Sunday, we handed out 2,000 native trees for residents across our city, not just the north side because it was in March and Ward on the weekend, but across our city to plant native trees in their backyard. We have also had our partners Queensland Urban Utilities at the fair to learn about everything water, and residents can enjoy the free refill stations for their reusable water bottles. Greenheart Fair was the first event for council's Greenheart Week, which runs from the 1st of June to the 9th, with activities running across the week. Some of these great activities will be there to celebrate World Environment Day, which, as councillor Richards mentioned, is tomorrow, the 5th of June. There are five fashion parades in Queen Street Mall with local designers highlighting the impact of single-use plastics on our environment, and with the solution not the pollution runway show and the love of food. Councillor Richards, I understand that you will be there tomorrow to see some of these fashion parades, and I look forward to hearing in detail from you how successful it was tomorrow. End of this week will be ended by the Koala Festival on Sunday at Mount Cravat East. This tree planting event will help protect the local koala population by getting the community involved and plant a tree. This free, family-friendly event will feature tree planting, live music, activities for kids, craft workshops with food and coffee on site. Living more sustainably must be more than just a bumper sticker. We have a proud record stretching back decades in leading the way for other councils to follow, like expanding our network of our green corridors and habitat for wildlife through our bushland acquisition program. This brings me to an amazing announcement that the Lord Mayor said on Sunday at the Greenheart Fair. The Greener Suburban Suburbs Project will create more walkable neighbourhoods and also increase landscaping in a variety of areas around shops, medium strips, and our suburbs. In the new financial year, we'll be rolling out this program out to a number of suburbs across the city. Consultation will be very important, and I encourage all councillors, if you have this project in your area, please get involved and ensure that you work with your residents to maximise the planting of trees on the grounds of this program. If we don't, the program will not be a success. We need more trees. We encourage people to have more trees. We want a cleaner, greener, sustainable city, so please, councillors, get behind this program. Officers will soon be in touch with the relevant councillors who have had the project in their wards to get the ball rolling on this project, which will receive over $2 million in funding in the 2019-20 budget.
Councillor Hammond, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Field Services, councillor Vicky Howard. Councillor Howard, as you know, each year Brisbane residents dispose of more than 12,000 tonnes of disposable nappies. Disposable nappies are a non-recyclable, resource-intensive, and it's estimated it would take up to 500 years for them to break down. As Chair, with great fanfare, you introduced in September 2018 a sustainable nappy cashback scheme for Brisbane residents to enter into a monthly lottery draw to win back their investment in reusable nappy products up to $300, along with two individual $50 vouchers for two additional people or families. Councillor Howard, can you tell us how many Brisbane residents have taken up with the opportunity to register for the monthly draw each month since the start and now? And also, could you tell us also what the reduction has been in the 1,200 tonnes of disposable nappies that would have taken place over the last 12 months?
There's quite a bit there, councillor Howard. I'll trust you'll answer as much as you can. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Strunk for the question, and I know that he has been a great advocate for keeping waste from landfill, and of course, that's something that is incredibly important to the residents of Brisbane. The nappy cashback scheme was one of the many, many things that field services and in particular our waste and resource recovery team, our waste minimisation team, work on right throughout the year. So, you know, we all know about love food, hate waste, and we know about a lot of the other programs that we have. And so the nappy cashback scheme is one of those that forms a number of activities that we use to try and encourage our residents right across Brisbane to think carefully about what they put into our red-top bin, into our recycle bin, and now, of course, into our green bins. So it is important from an educational point of view, and particularly this particular scheme councillor Strunk was one that we introduced, to try and have new families think about using cloth nappies. And we know that we're in a very fast-tracked society and that often the use of cloth nappies might not be something that many families can do, but it's certainly something that we encourage. As a mother myself of many, many years ago, we only had cloth nappies, so it was not something that we had to consider then. But I can tell you, councillor Strunk, I can't give you the exact details, but I'll certainly get the data that you've asked for and respond to you in my committee report, but it has been very successful. We've had quite a number of people who have committed to the program. We're extremely pleased to see it being so well-received, and I think that it's a testimony to our waste minimisation team to come up with innovative ideas that we can put forward to the residents of Brisbane so that people can think about what it is that they can do to keep waste from landfill. And it's certainly something that isn't every family will look at, but we very much hope that people will use the opportunity of these types of projects to think about what they're putting into landfill, to think about if they're a young family and if they have a newborn, that they can think about cloth nappies, that we can think about how we remove particularly nappies from our waste cycle because they are certainly something that contributes greatly to our landfill problem. So councillor Strunk, thank you very much for the question. Really appreciate that you're interested in the program. I know that you were on radio talking about it, so I know that it's something that you're very keen to hear about. I'll certainly get some data and statistics, but I can tell you that there has been a take-up for the program and that our team are working with a number of families to see how we can encourage people to keep waste from landfill. Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Lifestyle Committee, councillor Maddick. Councillor Maddick, this administration has a history of strong community consultation in relation to smoking regulation in Brisbane. Can you outline the history of smoking regulations applicable across the city and then any alternative approaches that you might be aware of?
Councillor Maddick.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank councillor Murphy for the question. And we did speak about this in the chamber last weekend. It was with interest that we saw an example of what effectively is policy on the run from the ALP and particularly councillor Cook. And whether that thought bubble came from her or whether it came from councillor Cumming, well, he probably doesn't take the credit for it because we haven't heard him- credit for it because we haven't heard him say anything about this particular issue from last Tuesday, but he did just make a comment now, so he must have just caught the memo around the motion that was presented by councillor Cook last week. But as I said then, Mr Chair, this administration has taken the issue very seriously. If you listen to the urgency motion from councillor Cook, it was like nothing has happened in this city at all, ever. And look, I can understand, she's new to the chamber, new to what council has done in the past, so she may not have been aware of the history of how much work this administration has actually undertaken, but the very clear point of difference between this side and those in opposition is consultation and engagement and finding the balance, Mr Chair. Now, in 2011, this administration proactively consulted with the community about banning smoking and there was a lack of community support to prohibit smoking in other locations across the CBD beyond the Queen Street Mall and the Fortitude Valley Mall. Now, in the past two years, no resident has contacted the Lord Mayor seeking a citywide ban on smoking in public parks and only five people have requested a ban in public squares. Yet if you listen to the urgency motion from councillor Cook, it was rife, it was terrible, we needed to make movement now. Again, a failure to consult, a failure to understand what the people of Brisbane actually prioritise and where the balance truly is. Now, council continues its strong commitment to monitoring smoking in banned areas and also on the issue of maintaining a ban on littering. And that smoking ban enforcement has worked proactively and over the past three years, council has only issued five infringement notices and all of them were in 2016 for people who are not complying. Now, on top of that, if that was not wide enough already, the state government on the 1st of September 2016, within the Parliament, passed amendments to Tobacco and Other Smoking Products Act for laws that apply to a number of areas, organised underage sporting events, skate parks, public swimming pools, public transport waiting points, building entrances, pedestrian malls, children's playground equipment, outdoor commercial drinking and eating areas, early childhood education and care facilities, residential aged care facilities and temporary retail outlets. The smoking ban also banned smoking within 10 metres of any part of a skate park and the same distance from any part of children's outdoor play equipment at any place which is ordinarily open to the public. So councillor Cook stands up and talks about the ban and talks about the health and wellbeing of the elderly and children and families and yet everything this administration, the state government, has done since 2011 covers all of those particular aspects. And that's where the thalting starts to fall apart for councillor Cook because when you look at the motion that she moved, this half-cooked policy from councillor Cook was just really half-baked, Mr Chair. The idea that if they were to win the next council election, they would ban smoking in 2,000 parks across the city. Now imagine this, Mr Chair, so you've got a park and a playground in it and you take a park, for example, it may be from 800 square metres to maybe three hectares. So a person who's in that park who then wants to have a cigarette has to leave the park, physically leave the park and it's not enough that they stand on the footpath just outside the park, no. According to councillor Cook in a radio interview with the ABC last week, so the reporter said, so if they're taking their families to a park, where can they go? And she says, look, they can go across the road. We think that at the moment, you already can't smoke in parks where there are things like children, games playing. So they didn't even know what the law was before they got up and made the motion, they thought there were protections in parks but they weren't too sure and then councillor Cook wants people to physically leave the park, cross the road, go smoke in front of somebody else's house because it's not enough to be on the footpath. Mr Chair, this is a perfect example of the out-of-touch ALP opposite who they, Mr Chair, reckon that they represent. And it's interesting, since that story last week, Mr Chair, the Lord Mayor has received an avalanche of emails from residents in regards to smoking. In fact, just one, just one email from a resident and I'll just quote from this person. It says, "Many of our homeless and those with mental issues spend their days in our public parks, many of our indigenous people use these parks, they have a right to smoke, many of them do. Now the Labour Party wants to fine them for a cheap head..." Shame on you.
Councillor Matic, councillor Matic, councillor Matic, your time. Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Chair, my question to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I refer to the scathing PWC report into this LNP administration, City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, that you have battled tooth and nail to keep secret from ratepayers for more than 18 months. Your LNP administration has gone to unprecedented lengths to smother this damning indictment of an inept organisation built on pretend profits of council leasing buildings of itself. Even after the ABC successfully challenged your gag order to the Information Commissioner, its journalists were forbidden to make copies of the report. This is believed to be a first for Queensland, a new low in the history of right-to-information legislation in this state. The BCC Code of Conduct for Councils specifically orders you and your LNP colleagues to make decisions in a fair and transparent manner and make decisions solely in the public interest. Yet on October 5, 2017, in response to an RTI request for the very same PWC report, eventually viewed by the ABC, the opposition was advised that no relevant documents exist within council's control or possession, despite the council CEO being a member of the CBIC board. Given the report clearly did exist, explain to the people of Brisbane why you engage in a shameful cover-up of information they clearly deserve to know.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm not sure if that was a question or just a political statement and it wasn't a good one because it was full of crap, Mr Chair. It was full of crap.
Lord Mayor, that sort of language is unacceptable.
Okay, I withdraw that word. Look, it was full of rubbish, it was absolutely inaccurate portrayal of what had happened. First of all, this administration, the councillors in this administration do not make decisions on right-to-information applications. We do not get involved in any way, shape or form. Now, if you have a claim to make, you're making a reflection on a council officer and the way in which they do their job. And I'll tell you what, if you want to make that claim, put your money where your mouth is, make the claim, make a complaint and see if the proper process has been followed because we don't get involved in that, we do not get involved in that. But I'll tell you what we do get involved in.
Answers will be heard in silence. Answers will be heard in silence, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I'll tell you what we do get involved in, Mr Chair, we get involved in making money for the people of Brisbane through the CBIC that goes into buying parkland. We get involved in setting up a future fund that pays dividends back to council that goes into buying new parkland and creating new parkland. Now, we know that Labour has always opposed the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, the city's future fund. Why? Because when you've got a pot of money sitting there, Labour just can't resist it, they cannot resist it. I remember seeing this information, this study into delayed gratification and it was testing children and they were given an opportunity to have one lolly now.
Point of order. Mr Chair, relevance, the question was about this administration hiding this report, not about lollies, could you please bring the Lord Mayor to answering the question?
Lord Mayor, please be mindful of relevance, but you've only just begun the anecdote.
Yes, and this is very relevant because it goes to Labour's whole approach and, Mr Chair, the premise of their question was absolutely false, as I've already explained. No one is hiding anything, council officers make decisions on right-to-information applications and they have done that. And as I said, if you have a complaint about that, you need to go through the appropriate process. But this administration, these councillors did not have anything to do with that because we are the most open and transparent administration this city has ever had and...
Hey, hey, councillors, councillors, stop. No, councillors, answers will be heard in silence, answers.
And I will say, we are far more open and transparent than the state government or the federal government is as well because, yeah, when you're an opposition backbencher in the federal or state government, you can't get access to any documents, you just can't get access to anything, you can't even get a response out of ministers. But, Mr Chairman, back to the point I was making, there was a famous test done on children and they were given the opportunity to have one lolly now or to wait 20 minutes and they get two lollies. And it was interesting because, you know, some people would just naturally, they wanted to go after the lolly straight away, even though they knew there was bigger rewards if they waited. That is the Labour councillors, they were the kids that went after the lolly and couldn't wait and that is their approach when it comes to the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation. We're putting money away for the long term, we're investing in the future of the city, we're investing in our green spaces, Labour wants the sugar hit right now, they want to spend it on pork barreling for the next election, that's what they want to do, that's what they want to do. They said it last time, they're going to say it this time and I challenge them.
Point of order.
Tell me.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Under the meeting's local law, the Lord Mayor is required to actually answer the question, not debate the question, Mr Chair, so could you please direct him to answer the question, why was this report covered up?
I've already answered that question.
I think that the answer's been provided as well, Lord Mayor.
So there was nothing covered and if it was covered up, how can we know about this report? How come the ABC knows about this report?
They've denied a copy.
No, no, this administration was not involved in any way, shape or form in that.
I've brought quite a few people up about the sort of language they use, please don't use that sort of language in this place, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a clear policy of investing for the future of the city and that's what the CBIC, the city's future fund, is all about. It's about putting away the investment and watching that investment grow and then seeing the dividends come back to the people of Brisbane and those dividends are real, those dividends deliver real value. Now, I could just imagine Labour's approach, which would be to get their mitts on that money and to spend it all in one go and then not have anything left to show for it and guess what, they're becoming handicapped to the ratepayers of Brisbane with higher rate increases as a result of their profligacy. And so we know that last election, they funded election promises based on canning the CBIC. They did that, that was part of their strategy going into the last election, we know it's going to be part of their irresponsible strategy going into the next election. Well, I can tell you, our strategy is to deliver more parkland for the City of Brisbane, to buy more parkland and that's a strategy that goes year after year after year going forward. So we will see that money put into real benefit for the City of Brisbane. And so that's the real story here, this is a fund that has done an internal report, this was not a council report, this was commissioned by the Board of CBIC to review their own operations, they took on the recommendations of that report and they've implemented the recommendations of that report.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Brisbane River has been experiencing great attention and investment in recent months with major construction projects being built and new ones planned. Can you please outline to the chamber how we ensure the safety of residents who use the river for leisure-based activities as these works occur?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank my deputy chair, councillor McLaughlin, for the question. Brisbane is the river city, we know that and we have one of the most iconic pieces of natural assets flowing right through in and around the city, which provides us with so many more things to see and do. We also have a very great sense of local pride about the river as well, whether you're up in the Jamboree Ward or you're out in the Hamilton Ward, as councillor McLaughlin is as well. But we also have a responsibility to make sure that the Brisbane River is as safe as possible, so residents are getting home quicker and safe each day, which is incredibly important and we're also doing plenty of works around the river to make sure that it's more accessible to those residents as well, not just commuters, to make sure that Brisbane becomes better in the future than it is today. For 11 years now, we have seen the rowing experience a major increase in participation and we've been working closely with Rowing Queensland while this boom has happened. The Brisbane River sees more than 2,000 schoolboys and schoolgirls using the river for training and they aren't just skilled athletes, but they are our youth carrying out athletic pursuits and the excitement of the competition and it's not unusual to see more than 350 rowing boats stretching across the Brisbane River from the mouth to the river hills. And it is a longstanding relationship that's played a huge role in our evolution along the river, from the regatta hotel obviously, which held the first regattas along the Brisbane River, they've had to go out a little further west for those regattas now. But council has been working with both Rowing Queensland and the City Cat ferry drivers to make sure we are delivering safety initiatives in this space. We're making sure that public and active transport work in union and we're doing this so we can ease the congestions on our road, make sure it's more attractive to get onto the City Cats to get home quicker and safer. From installing sunblinds on our City Cats, lighting on the rowing pontoons or producing small but effective safety booklets for users of the river and how they use it. We have seen a sizeable decrease in the number of accidents on the river, but we know there's always more to be done. We engage and interact with all of our river users and this is starting to pay off, but we always need to make sure that front and centre of our work is the great deal of construction works on the river and how we work with that as well. With the recent construction of Howard Smith Walls, river access hubs and ferry terminals and of course our five new green bridges coming, it's only going to get busier. That's why I'm pleased to announce today that we will be issuing a grant of $50,000 to Rowing Queensland in a bid to further improve the safety on our city's iconic river. The boost of funding will help them address those ongoing issues between rowers and ferries. It'll help buy new safety systems so rowers can be seen in all light and weather conditions, improve education and enforcement frameworks to help all river users understand the role they play and finally help the investigation of more streamlined incident reporting systems so we can better understand more quickly how incidents occur and how we can prevent them into the future. The CEO of Rowing Queensland, Murray Stewart, is keen to get cracking on this work and with our support, we are hoping that we will see a further growth for our rowers on our popular river city and improve the access for all river users, commuters, recreational and lifestyle. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, my question's to councillor Hammond, the Chair of the Environment Committee. Councillor Hammond, the aim of the funding council received from the state government for a new coastal hazard adaption strategy was to prepare for storm-tide inundation, coastal erosion and the emerging threat of rising sea levels caused by climate change and yet in comments given to the media, you haven't once mentioned the effect of climate change. Have you joined the ranks of Malcolm Roberts and Tony Abbott and now believe climate change is not real?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'd like to thank the leader of the opposition for a very, very politically motivated question. Lord... Mr Chairman, I'd like to make it very clear, this council is a green, clean, sustainable city. We have a lot of initiatives to reduce waste across this city. We encourage our residents to reduce waste across this city. We are planting more trees across this city than what those opposite did because those...
Point of order. Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cumming.
Mr Chair, the question was clear-cut, it was about whether this chair believes in the effects of climate change.
I believe she's entering...
She's speaking about anything but climate change.
I think she's addressing matters within her area. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This debate was made in 2006 in this council chamber, that is why...
You were here, Pete, remember?
Yeah, Pete was probably the only one on that side that was there at the time and that is why this council had put in initiative to make a carbon-neutral council.
That's right.
And I am proud to say, we are the most and we are so passionate and proud of this city, we are the most sustainable city across Australia. We are carbon-neutral and we will continue to put initiatives forward to make a cleaner, greener city that we can be proud of. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
That concludes question time.
Oh.
Can I draw, okay, hey, councillors, that'll end. I'd like to draw your attention to the Establishment and Coordination Committee report dated 27th of May, Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 27th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 27th of May 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I am seeking further additional information with, I'm sorry, with respect to item B and I apologise if I'm pronouncing this badly, Voigl inclusion software. Could the Lord Mayor please advise us, other corporate or private sector users of this Voigl software technology, please?
Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr Chair. We'll take that question on notice, legitimate question, thank you councillor Johnston. Look, I just wanted to, before I move on to other matters, wanted to talk about the ALP urgency...
ALP urgency motion on the round-up or zero weed killer issue that they raised. Now, week after week, we see them coming in trying to make policy on the run. And we saw the debacle that was created by the smoking in the parks policy on the run, where, you know, smoking is already banned within 10 metres of playgrounds already. And councillor Cook's half-cooked idea to get people smoking out the front of people's houses instead was the outcome of that. And so policy on the run like this...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cook.
I'm just concerned that the Lord Mayor might be deliberately misleading the chamber about those comments.
Okay, thanks. That's not a point of order. Councillor Shree, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I'm quite happy to table the transcript of the ABC interview where you said it was okay for people to smoke out the front of other people's houses on the nature strip.
Point of order, councillor Cook.
That's also misleading the chamber. Thank you.
Councillor... Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So in relation to this policy-on-the-run approach, the policy-on-the-run that we're seeing today from Labour Council is very much a knee-jerk reaction. They are a policy-light opposition. And so they basically have a look at what's in the media at the moment and then work out some way of getting themselves some publicity. And that's really the way they've approached everything to date. Most of their policies relate to banning something or other. And here we see another knee-jerk ban response. Now, it was very clear when I answered the question that we're having a look at what we're doing to take a sensible approach, to make sure that we're using this product safely, to make sure we're continually reviewing the research and information to hand on this. And so, and that is the appropriate way because it's interesting. You hear members of the Labour Party when it comes to the issue of climate change, which they raised before, saying, well, you've got to listen to the scientists. Well, why don't you listen to the scientists when it comes to pesticides and the use of chemicals? Because at the moment, the leading authority on agri-chemicals is the Australian Pesticides and Veterinary Medicines Authority. And they are people, along with other federal agencies, that monitor, do research and regulate the use of these kinds of chemicals. Now, like any chemical, you absolutely have to have safe handling procedures in place. There is no doubt about that. There are safe ways and there are unsafe ways to use any chemical. Now, it might be the same for people who are doing cleaning in council facilities. Inappropriate use of certain cleaning products can be dangerous. That's the reality. There are many chemicals that can be dangerous. And that's why we have standard procedures, safety procedures in place. And it is the same when it comes to the use of pesticides. But I think there's a little bit more at play here. Apart from the opportunity to get, you know, to try and get a bit of publicity and appear like they have an agenda, I can foresee down the track that if our city was overgrown with weeds in the lead-up to the next election, Labour would love that as a political outcome. And I wonder if that's part of their motivation here. Because I know that if you stop using chemical weed treatment, what's the alternative to that? Hand removal? Hand removal of weeds? What are the alternative products available? Because the experts say that there is nothing available on the market...
Councillors will be heard in silence. Councillors... Councillor Cook. Please stop laughing.
Councillor Cook...
Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cook thinks it's funny that her policy will lead to the city being overgrown with weeds. That is not funny.
Lord Mayor, can you just take a moment, please? Councillor Cook, can you please cease interjecting? It's not conducive to the smooth operation of this meeting. Please cease interjecting. Please cease talking. Lord Mayor.
Yep. And so ultimately, going forward, we need a measured and sensible approach to this. We need to make sure our staff are safe, the public are safe. And the kind of knee-jerk reaction here is simply designed to get them a story and also has the added side benefit of causing unnecessary concern out in the community. Because I know that when our council staff do use chemical treatment on weeds, they're not spraying it indiscriminately around, they're not spraying it on playgrounds or on children, they're not spraying it on widespread areas across the city. It is a very targeted and guided approach, and the safety procedures that are used for doing that are something which we continue to develop and we continue to make sure that we have a zero-harm workforce. Because ultimately, these things, like any chemical use, whether it's cleaning products, whether it's chemical pesticides, need to be dealt with in a safe manner. And that's our priority. And that's what I gave the commitment we would continue to do, to make sure we're using this as safe as possible. If there is another alternative product that is determined by the experts and the scientists to be safe, fantastic, we'll have a look at using that. But so far, all of the advice we've been given is that there is not such an alternative. And so we will go forward in a sensible and measured way on this matter, which is the appropriate thing to do. When it comes to some other issues I wish to raise, as I generally do each Tuesday, I wanted to update councillors on the lighting up of council assets and the important community initiatives and causes that we're supporting as a city going forward. And whether it's community initiatives, whether it's charities or whether it's major sporting events, we're a city that absolutely appreciates lighting up the major assets of the city and celebrating the great things that are happening in our city. So today marks the eve of World Environment Day, and the Queensland Conservation Council is turning 50. And the Tropical Dome, Radcliffe Place, Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge will all be lit up green to commemorate World Environment Day on June 5th. And so they'll be lit up green today. Tomorrow, what's the day tomorrow? Origin. Origin tomorrow. So Environment Day, we're acknowledging today, Origin tomorrow. And obviously, we'll be lighting up the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place in Morone. On Thursday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be again lit up in Morone, hopefully to celebrate a big win tomorrow night. Fingers crossed. On Friday and Saturday, we'll...
Councillors have got the giggles. Please stop. Please stop laughing. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. On Friday and Saturday night, we're celebrating the Girl Guides Biscuit Month by having Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place illuminated blue and yellow in support of the annual Girl Guide Biscuit Drive, which supports by Girl Guides Queensland by providing vital funds. As councillor Hammond mentioned as well, we had the Green Heart Fair on the weekend, and that was just another fantastic event, but also the 10th year anniversary of the Green Heart Fair. And, you know, we had a question about climate change today and whether we believe in climate change, and we're like more than a decade into our climate change response. So I don't know where Peter Cumming has been or councillor Cumming has been, or whether he's been paying attention or not, but we're well over a decade.
Councillors will be heard in silence. Everyone seems to be in a pretty lively mood today. Can we please remain calm while the meeting... Councillor Cook's laughing again. She can't help herself. All right.
You're giving me the giggles now. Thank you, Mr Chair. We are well over a decade into our city's response to the issue of climate change. So we're not spending our time debating whether it exists or not, we're spending our time investing in the initiatives to deal with it and to respond with it. And the Green Heart Fair is just one of many things that we're doing right across the city. All of the practical programmes, all of the environmental initiatives, the Carbon Neutral Council, Australia's largest carbon-neutral organisation, and all of the other initiatives that come with our response to climate change, big and small, we're getting on with it. And so, yes, while councillor Cumming might want to make a cheap political shot, the reality is he's about a decade behind the times with that particular issue.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
An extension of time has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and councillor Hammond. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Item A on the agenda, we have stores board submission for a significant contracting plan for the verification services for the Brisbane Metro project. As we know, Brisbane Metro is a game changer for the city. It's a fully funded project. It's one that we're getting on with. It's one that we're looking forward to receiving state government approvals on very soon. I, unlike some people, hold out hope that the state government will, in fact, cooperate and be reasonable and assist us in delivering this project. I believe they have the right intentions here. Hopefully, they won't prove me wrong, but we are getting on with it. And as you know, we're out to tender on two of the major initiatives when it comes to Brisbane Metro, which are the vehicles and also the inner-city works contracting plan. This is another part of that tender process that we're gearing up today. And it is really important to make sure that we can deliver the Metro project in a timely fashion to benefit the people of Brisbane. Item B, which is the contract to award a Better Brisbane proposal, which is an unsolicited proposal for the Alkira software. Alkira approached council with a proposal back in 2017 to provide inclusion software on council's website. The software provides markups to council's website that will enable it to be more accessible for people with a vision impairment. While there are some other solutions on the market, most solutions for vision impairment involve reading out the entire contents of a webpage to the user, which is not always what they want and not always practical. The Alkira solution will present users with audible and text prompts that step users through a task that is based on curated customer journeys around popular tasks, transactions and content. Under the proposal with Alkira, council will have an unrestricted licence to use the inclusion software. Having an unrestricted licence means we can make it accessible to anyone wanting to access council's website for free. The contract is for an initial period of one year with an option to extend for another two years. I can advise that currently, in terms of the users of this particular software, Redlands and Rockhampton City Councils, and also RACQ, and that's Aldi, is it?
And Aldi.
Aldi. So Aldi supermarkets as well. So there are other users of this software. I think it will be a really positive thing for people with low vision or a vision impairment. And that is, you know, one of the many initiatives we're rolling out across the city to make our city accessible for all, to make sure that everyone can get access to the information that they would like to and have a positive user experience through the council website or other channels. So I think this is really something that deserves the support of all councillors. We have item C, which is the contracts and tendering report. I won't read through all of those. The information is there for everyone to see. Item D is a minor amendment package, package H, and it's administrative amendment package that is largely reflective of rezoning in accordance with existing development approvals. So examples of where developments have been built, essentially tidying up zoning of those to reflect the existing approved use. These rezonings also reflect this administration's blueprint action to ensure that suburban development fits in with surroundings. Since our administration announced the blueprint, council has rezoned over 2,200 lots from emerging community to low-density residential. And so that is part of the plan to make sure that, as I said, townhouses are not in areas where they are unsuitable. So low-density areas remain low-density. And as we've heard today, we're progressing with the townhouse ban in low-density. And this is part of that approach as well to make sure that areas that are currently zoned as emerging community but would be more suitable to be zoned as low-density have that zoning transfer or change occur. The minor amendment package also contains administrative amendments to city plan. For example, ensuring changes to the State Heritage Register are reflected and that recently declared priority development areas are shown on city plan mapping. Item E is a major amendment package which relates to changes to car parking, which I talked about in question time. This is something we clearly flagged as part of the Brisbane Future Blueprint and are now proceeding to implementation on. I believe that this is in line with the community expectations in relation to development and look forward to going through the upcoming steps to do further consultation with the community and also, hopefully, to receive support from the state government on these proposed changes. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll leave it at that.
The speakers.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
I seek suspension of so much of standing orders as is necessary to allow me to move the following urgency motion. That Brisbane City Council calls on the state government to reconsider its current plans for the expansion of the Queensland Academy for Science, Maths and Technology at 78 Baiwong Street to Wong, so that new buildings and facilities are not located in close proximity to the ecologically sensitive Tuwong Creek Corridor. BCC will write to the relevant ministers and urge them to thoroughly investigate the environmental impacts of the proposed development to ensure it does not put endangered wildlife at risk or negatively impact the ecological values of this significant waterway.
Do you have a second, Ed?
Seconded.
Thanks. I've emailed that through to you and to the council email, so...
It's very long, but let's just deal with urgency straight away. So councillor Shree, do you have three minutes for urgency?
Thanks, Mr Chair. So this is quite an urgent matter because this particular development is already underway. We're talking about the Tuwong Academy site, where there's been a few community campaigns raising concerns about the expansion of those school buildings and their impacts on the neighbouring Creek Corridor. This is one of the few partially intact wildlife corridors connecting Mount Cootha down to the Brisbane River. And there have been a lot of concerns raised about the negative impacts, particularly on endangered species such as the tusk frog and the powerful owl. This is particularly urgent and relevant to council because the development encroaches upon a neighbour's council-owned Creek Corridor. So this has a direct negative impact on council-controlled land, and clearing is currently underway, and plans are currently being finalised as to where the buildings will be located. There are obviously concerns, not just about the clearing, but the proximity of loud noises and lights in close proximity to sensitive ecological areas. So this motion is simply raising concerns and encouraging the council here to raise its concerns with the state government. It's important that BCC plays an active role in advocating for the preservation and protection of this Creek Corridor. Obviously, the state MP in that area, Michael Burke, has been raising concerns at the state level as well. But given that this directly impacts council-controlled wildlife corridor, it's really important that, right here in this chamber, we make a strong stand and raise our concerns as well. The residents in that area have been writing to the minister and finding that they're getting no response from the state government. It seems like the state government is unwilling to listen to the concerns of residents, and as I'm sure...
Councillor Shree, I appreciate you. The comments you're making are important. However, can I just bring you back to urgency, please?
Sure. So just to highlight and emphasise, this development is currently underway. There are serious concerns raised about the environmental impact studies and the nature of the ecological impact statements that have been produced. But unless we urgently call on the state government to reconsider its plans, there are serious concerns that this development will go ahead in its current form without any further mitigating factors for the sensitive areas adjoining it.
On the matter of urgency, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
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 Division.
The ayes have it.
Division.
There's a division called by councillor Shree and councillor Johnston. Ayes to my right, nays to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the nos have it. The voting being eighteen apologies, the voting being two in favour, eighteen nos and five abstentions.
The motion is lost. Please return to your chairs.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, in relation to the Establishment Coordination Committee report, in relation to item A, we accept this type of service is normally provided for projects like the Metro, but we'd also point out that this administration notorious for cost overruns and delays. And of course, we can remember Kingsford Smith Drive, 47 million and counting, a couple of years behind. The Tech One debacle, where 27 million was spent and the project was effectively abandoned. Green Camp Road, more recently, a substantial cost overrun as well. So we've got grave doubts whether any project verification services will save the Metro from substantial cost overruns and chronic delays, and the delays have already started, of course. So in relation to item B, the Stores Board submission, this is a Better Brisbane Proposal. If you look up the history, it's a Californian company originally, and, well, that's the head office. And the software to name, vision impaired users of the software to move easily and navigate council's website. We obviously are keen to see modern technology used to assist vision impaired residents, and we would be interested in knowing how many residents there are who are likely to use the technology. The cost is at $98,300 for three years. In relation to item C, unlike the Lord Mayor, I think there are some details required for this item for if the administration expects anyone to support the items in the contracts that have been let. In relation to contract to the ward offices, this cost seems reasonable. My understanding, my recollection was the cost of council Adams Ward Office a couple of years ago was something more like $400,000, which was far more than either of these. It's same cost as these two put together. But anyhow, perhaps the cost of ward office depends on the ego of the councillor involved, sort of thing. Madam, Mr Chairman, and item eight, the Forest Lake Junior Sports Field Lighting, happy to see lighting of sports fields. I've spoken to councillor Strunk, and he said that's one field, councillor Strunk, was it? One field. It's expensive exercise, isn't it? $413,000 for lighting of one sports field. So anyhow, but it's good to see that happening. In relation to item nine, the stormwater harvesting, just interesting in knowing where, whether it's a series of project or what projects involved for item nine, some $626,594, so just wonder what we're getting for our money there. Just a query on the access inclusion, obviously supportive of that, item 10. Is the Jazz Club a leased property from council or is it a private property? But either way, we support the proposal. Item 11, the missing person's memorial garden, just what's the location of that property, of that feature? Again, something we're supportive of, but we'd like to know more about it. Item 12 is one where the preferred tenderer was for $373,384, whereas the best shortlisted offer not recommended was $277,760, which is a rough calculation off the top of my head is about. So the tenderer that was preferred was 40% more expensive, and I'd like some explanation of that. Also in passing, in relation to item 13, the stormwater infrastructure cleaning services, the successful tenderer gained there at $2,465,087 was significantly more expensive than one of the category of tenderers who was rejected, and that's as you like it landscaping, which was $2,271,380. So just an explanation that would be worthwhile as well. One we've got some concerns about, our item 15, is the contract given to HCL Services. Well, we had some, there was some adverse publicity about HCL Services not that long ago, and some very serious allegations were made. And I know the services union, it was, represented some of the people that were involved with HCL and managed to get substantial payouts for them because they hadn't been paid properly. And there was also allegations that HCL had told some of the contractors that had, they'd brought over from India, which is where HCL's head office was, and said if they complained, then they would be, their visa would be terminated and they'd be sent back to India. Again, that's no way to treat your workers, and we would much prefer the Brisbane City Council not dealing with HCL anymore, and we wouldn't have given them a contract, this contract that's in this report. In relation to item 17, just a comment on passing about the video and audio broadcasting to the council meetings, obviously, we all supported that. Just why there's a panel arrangement, there's two companies listed that are on the panel, and there's a big difference in the price. They are offering Livestream Australia, Pity Wild to Do, $102,250, and Encore Event Technologies, $164,648. A second member of the panel, 60% more expensive than the first one, and you'd wonder why we would have gone for a panel rather than just give the contract to Livestream. In relation to item D, well, this is one of the normal messes of amendments, massive messy of amendments, which just shows that the Brisbane City Council, I think, actually, I suspect they need to engage a proofreader of their planning documents rather than having to come back to the chamber over and over again with massive numbers of typos and other errors. I think on one of the documents, I think the total number of errors is some 225, and that's just really pathetic. And I suspect it's something to do with the fact that the planning chair is actually, as we know, he's only a part-time planning chair here, and he's the LGAQ, the LGAQ. I've got his statement, his statement as positions, he's a LGAQ Director, LGIA Super Director, LGIAC Foods Pity Wildy Director, LGIAC Services Pity Wildy Director. Sorry?
Reading the register of interest is not relevant.
It is, it is, because.
Please stick to the content of the report.
It's because councillor Burke is not doing his job properly as Chair of the Planning Committee, and he's getting paid, what is it, another $100,000 a year for doing all these jobs for the.
Councillor Cumming, I trust you're not ignoring my direction. Please return to the substantive notes in front of you.
I think I made my point, Mr Chair. I think I've made my point. So this is a real shambles, this section of the report, and it's done because, it's necessary because the council's not doing the job properly when planning amendments are brought to the Brisbane City Council. In relation to item E, well, this is another matter where the administration has adopted a Labour Party policy, a Labour Party policy, and I hold up for the chamber to look at, Rod Harding and Labour's Better Planning and Development Guarantee from the last election, 2016. And item four, Labour's promise, we will stop our streets being parked out. Not enough parking is provided in new developments. We will appropriately increase the onsite parking requirements, including visitor spots. So what an excellent policy that is, and it's a great shame that it's taken so long for this administration to adopt Labour's policy. The administration are continually pinching Labour's policies, and this is just another case of it. And we say that this is well overdue, way overdue, this proposal, but it's also, it doesn't go far enough. It doesn't go far enough either. And so while we'll be supporting it today, we don't think it goes far enough. And, Mr Chairman, and what this council needs, instead of an LNP administration pinching Labour Party policies left, right and centre, we need a Labour administration implementing Labour policies.
Further speakers, they're being done. Oh.
Sorry.
Councillor Shree.
Okay, Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly on the item E, the major amendments to city plan. And I think I'm probably the only councillor in this chamber who isn't entirely happy about the increases to parking minimums, particularly around areas closer to train stations. When I first saw this amendment, I actually misread it slightly, and I thought, oh, actually, that looks like they're scrapping the minimum requirements for parking within 400 metres of train stations and bus stations. I thought, finally, this administration is coming around, and there's been, there's a genuine shift towards public transport. But actually, what this administration is doing is forcing developers to provide more parking than the market might actually demand. And it's an interesting one because it seems to conflict with the underlying ideological and philosophical values of this administration, where when we, for example, advocate that developers should be required to include onsite composting or greywater recycling or onsite renewable energy, any other sustainable building features, the administration's response is, no, we want to leave it up to the market, we want to let developers decide for themselves. And yet strangely, for this issue of parking, the council is forcing the property industry to deliver more parking than even many of the prospective apartment buyers might actually want to acquire. So my concern here is that we're taking a one-size-fits-all approach to a complex problem. I fully acknowledge that in many parts of the city, the construction of new apartments does cause significant impacts on street parking in the surrounding areas, but there are other parts of the city, particularly around some of those transport hubs, where we don't actually want to be encouraging people to travel by private vehicle as their main mode of transport, and where there are certain demographics that are quite happy to live in apartments above train stations or above bus stations without owning multiple vehicles. So what I'm advocating for is that we take a more flexible approach here, and just as we've said with the city core and with the city frame, that there will be maximum parking limits rather than minimum parking limits. Within close walking distance of those public transport hubs, we might actually need to be taking a more nuanced approach and moving away from a citywide, broad brush, one-size-fits-all strategy. And I guess my other concern, of course, is that I don't really think these rules are going to be enforced anyway. We've seen a fairly consistent track record where the administration has rules in the city plan but then doesn't hold developers to them. But my core concern here is that rather than looking at the specific local context of different neighbourhoods and the specific needs of different communities, the council is essentially further simplifying and further broadening this one-size-fits-all rule to apply to developers across the city. Now, this seems to contradict the council's own stated goals of supporting and encouraging active and public transport and shifting more people towards those modes of transport and away from dependence on private vehicles. Now, certainly, there are plenty of demographics and plenty of residents who do need to own multiple vehicles, and then there are some who don't. But by forcing developers to provide this in every new apartment development, regardless of whether the market is demanding it or not, council is setting up a situation where in a few years, when car ownership rates drop further and there's less demand for off-street and on-street parking, we're going to see a whole bunch of towers that have a lot of empty and vacant basement car parking that they don't know what to do with. We're already seeing this in my area around places like Woolongaba, where people move into new apartments and then have to rent out their own car park, which technically they're not meant to be doing, but they do it because they don't need the car park for themselves. The thing is, they have to have it because the developers have been required to build it. So I'm quite open to the conversation about, oh, maybe we need more off-street parking in some areas, maybe we need less off-street parking in other areas. But this one-size-fits-all strategy seems to be contrary to the council's stated intention of supporting active public transport, and is also contrary to leading contemporary transport planning advice. I know the Lord Mayor will likely respond by saying, this is what the people of Brisbane wanted, and, oh, don't you want to give people a say? But I think it's important to recognise that Plan Your Brisbane was not a representative sample of the interests of Brisbane residents as a whole. It does not necessarily reflect the views of all the people of Brisbane, and certainly there are plenty of residents in my electorate who have strongly and clearly told me that they don't want more parking, more off-street parking included in new developments. And there's a lot of variation from one suburb to another and from one neighbourhood to another within suburbs. My point here is that local communities should have more of a say, rather than simply listening to one sector of the population and ignoring expert advice and ignoring other local residents' needs. So I'm hopeful that this administration will be open to further changes. I'm definitely quite supportive of expanding the city frame boundaries so that it takes in more of the Gab ward. I'm not going to speak for other parts of the city or talk about what other councils think their areas need, but certainly in my ward, we know and residents are increasingly understanding that the more parking which is included as part of a new development, the more trips that generates and the more traffic congestion that creates in surrounding neighbourhoods. So if you provide more parking, that means more cars in an area, and that means that the roads become less safe for pedestrians, less safe for cyclists, and less supportive of active and public transport in general. So I hope that through you, Mr Chair, councillor Burke, he will remain open to further conversations about this issue. I'm not, I realise this amendment's coming before us here today and it's going to get voted through regardless, but I do hope that the administration remains open to further conversations about parking requirements. I hope there is a serious and genuine commitment to shift to more innovative responses to our transport problems because this change day is largely just tinkering around the edges. It doesn't go to the core needs of the city, it doesn't address the fundamental problems with Brisbane's transport system in general. And I'd say, finally, that rather than forcing developers to be building more private car parks, maybe we should be forcing them to contribute more towards the costs of public transport. Other councils in this chamber have argued against increased infrastructure charges in the past on the basis that that will drive up the cost of housing, but forcing developers to build far more underground car parking spots than they actually want to is also going to drive up the cost of housing and arguably much more so than a minor increase in infrastructure charges. So I really think we should have different rules for different parts of Brisbane, and I think we should have more conversations with local residents about what they think their specific neighbourhoods need, because right now what I'm hearing from a lot of people within my electorate is that they want a bigger emphasis on active and public transport, they want more money spent on bike lanes, they want more money spent on new high-frequency bus services, and they don't want to see developers forced to build more car parks than when the market and the buyers and the residents who end up living there don't even want them.
Further speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and I rise to speak on item A in the report today, which is the significant contracting plan for project verification services for the Metro project. I tried to understand what councillor Cumming was saying about this, but I don't think councillor Cumming understood what this was either. So I'll just talk about what this actually is delivering for the Metro project itself. We do know, obviously, the Metro is going to be a game changer for Brisbane. We do know, obviously, the Metro is going to be a game changer for Brisbane. Twenty-one kilometres of dedicated metro line, eighteen stations, services every three minutes in the peak, and twenty-four hours on the weekend. It is going to be high capacity, it's going to be high frequency, and it's what this city needs to get us moving into the future. We know, I know, my residents are excited, and there's a lot of residents excited about the Metro and the opportunity to make sure that we can get people home quicker and safer, or into work quicker and safer, as the case may be as well. Once on a metro platform, you just need to show up and you can go. But more importantly, I think, the Metro are moving up to 200 buses per hour from slower inner-city movements, allowing more buses in the middle and outer suburbs. So that will enable truncated services that will deliver residents from right around the Brisbane suburbs to metro platforms through a quick transfer that when they turn up, they can go. We can avoid the cultural tunnel hold-up that we have at the moment on the south side that I'm very familiar with, and the clogs that we get on the north side as well. But the trick is, you need to be able to turn up and go, it needs to be reliable, and we need to make sure that the system runs how we want it to and when we need it to. And that's why this contracting plan is about engaging a project verifier. That is somebody who makes sure that all the components of the Metro complies with our agreed specifications and our legal requirements. This is good practice for all large construction projects. It gives assurance to the state government and to residents that any assets that are returned to them, and any assets that we've worked on, have been designed and built properly. We did the same thing when we built the Legacy Way, as well as the Goodwill Bridge. So we'll be engaging a verifier for two components of this project. We've got the collaborative partnership, which is making sure the inner-city infrastructure and suburban works all go to plan. And then the second is for the metro vehicles themselves, the design and delivery. The tender process is making good ground, and as it stands, the project is on track, councillor Cumming, for a 2023 completion, as has always been advertised. Once approved today, we will then be seeking expressions of interest for the verifier, and then going straight to request for proposals in early August. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on E and C, item E. Yeah, that's the parking one, item E, yes. And just reiterate some of those points that the leader of the opposition made here tonight, that we will, of course, be supporting this, and there are differing views. Obviously, the Greens have a different view to other councillors in the chamber here when it comes to the effects of this LNP administration's decision in 2014 to slash the ratios of car parking in unit developments right across Brisbane. And the rhetoric that we hear from the administration is that they had nothing to do with the effects of their decision in 2014 to these changes to car parking ratios, but they have now somehow listened to the people of Brisbane, even though for five years people have been screaming out for change, and all of a sudden, they are the great saviors of the streetscapes of our suburbs, they are, you know, the great saviors of the backyards, even though all of the decisions that were taken, which have led us to this point, were taken by them, Mr. Chair. Now, I wasn't here in the debate in City Plan 2014, but I've gone back and looked at those transcripts and had a look at some of that debate. And I know that the councillor for Tennyson and Labor councillors at the time raised serious concerns in 2014 during that debate about the effects that those changes that this LNP were pushing through, that this tired old LNP administration, that is five years older and tired now, Mr. Chair, were pushing through at the time, would have dramatic impacts on suburbs right around Brisbane. Now, I know in my own community, particularly in Zillmia, where we are seeing the effects that these changes have had on the very fabric of our communities. Go down any of those streets off Zillmia Road that are maybe 400 metres away from the train station, many more than 400 metres away from the Zillmia train station, where the streetscape used to be made up of post-war cottages on 800 to 1,000 square metre blocks. And yes, as Brisbane develops and grows, we do expect increased density in different parts of our city. So what Zillmia has had has been this intense development over the last five or so years, where these streets have been transformed from, you know, your old-fashioned suburban streets to streets where almost every block now has six or eight or 10 units on them. The result of the decision that this LNP administration took in 2014 to reduce the car parking ratios has meant all of those streets have turned into car parks. Every day of the week, those streets are clogged with cars. Those streets weren't designed to have cars parked on either side of them all day, every day, and that has impacted on people's lives. We know the very fabric of those communities has been changed by a decision that this administration took in 2014. We have been calling since that time for an increase in the car parking ratio. The leader of the opposition has brought in once again another point of ride harding's Better Planning Guarantee is marked off. And that's good, we're happy to continue to assist in the policy development of this city and provide good ideas to this administration. But, you know, the only thing better for this city and for the future of this city than an LNP administration that is out of touch and out of ideas, pinching Labor Party ideas, is for a Labor administration come March 2020. So we look forward to being able to implement much more of the changes that we know, talking to the people of Brisbane, the sort of changes that they want to see around our city. We don't need to spend $3 million promoting the Lord Mayor through an advertising campaign to get them. We have clearly been ahead of the game when it comes to this, when it comes to listening to people in Brisbane, and it's coming home to roost for this administration. We know they're scrambling as hard as they can after they did their focus groups, Mr. Chair, last year, and knew that their policies that they enacted over the last few years were toxic, were electorally toxic for them. So we know that's what this is all about, but we think that the best thing for Brisbane come March 2020 is to have an administration that doesn't need to scramble around and pinch other ideas, an administration that will actually put people at the centre of everything we do.
Further speakers? Councillor Richards.
Mr. Chair, I move the council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks. This council now adjourn for a period of 15 minutes for the purpose of afternoon tea, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. The country no.
councillors councillors there any further speakers councillor Johnston
yes I rise to speak on hopefully all items on the enc report before us today but I'd like to start with item E now five and a half years ago we had a special week-long debate about the new city plan city plan 2014 and there are a few new councillors who've come into the place since then but I was here and I remember that debate I remember the then deputy mayor now Lord Mayor I remember councillor Adams I remember councillor Cooper and councillor shriner is sorry councillor Simmons former councillor councillor Burke councillor McLaughlin councillor Hammond councillor Maddick councillor Owen all of these councillors getting up one after and yourself Mr Chairman getting up one after the other praising city plan 2014 we were held down when we raised concerns I mean I made one of the most extensive submissions I have ever made to a council consultation project and it was ignored ignored when we got into the debate there were multiple amendments moved to try and make city plan better they were all voted against and and it is astonishing astonishing that five years later councillor Burke is coming into this place and councillor shriner the Lord Mayor trying to claim that the change back to the pre city plan 2014 parking ratios back to that ratio it's not improving on that ratio it's going back to what we had that that is some kind of you breakthrough by the LNP it is not for five and a half years this LNP has destroyed the suburbs of Brisbane with its reduced parking ratios my ward unfortunately has copped the brunt of this due to the dual up zoning and the reduction in parking ratios and it is it has wrecked absolutely wrecked streets where there is medium density because there are just not enough car parks not enough car parks not only did they reduce the ratios for units so you didn't even need one car park per unit they reduced the visitor car parking from 25 down to 15 now they're going back back it's taken them five years five years to realise what an absolute debacle city plan 2014 was now I for one knew it back then as did a lot of other councillors in this place well there's a few who were here then and I can tell you now that it was a massive massive mistake the fact that you are standing up today trying to claim credit for fixing an error five and a half years after you stuffed it up is just ridiculous ridiculous you did this to our city you have destroyed certain parts of our city because of the changes that you brought in gleefully gleefully in city plan 2014 they were wrong then now the fact that you are belatedly fixing them because whatever polling you got in the middle of last year shows that the community is furious with you furious not just in my ward I can tell you in most of your wards too furious with you it's just I can't believe it I just you people are you're a joke it is a joke that you are claiming credit for reversing your decision so I just would like everybody listening at home and all the journalists listening and all the council officers in February 2014 when we had this debate myself and the Labour councillors who were here at the time strongly opposed the LNP's diabolical changes that have adversely impacted on so many communities around our city we opposed them I opposed them and I've been fighting them ever since then as well this LNP administration now under the threat of political death has decided to start reversing some of these changes they don't deserve credit for this and I think every resident in Brisbane is going to remember the five and a half years of pain and disruption that they have caused in our suburbs I'd also just like to make some amendment remarks about item B the Voigl inclusion software for website management and I thank the Lord Mayor for giving me the other examples of Redland City Council Rockhampton City Council the ROCQ and ALDI I have been very critical in the past of sole source contracts without tender and it is a concern to me if there are other suppliers in the market that one supplier is given a rails run and that is a problem with the innovative proposal situation that the LNP have got going if there's a good idea that comes forward we do need to test that against the market now it certainly sounds like this product will be a very good one and it sounds like it will deliver better services to vision impaired residents in Brisbane and you know for me that's a very good thing I have a very large blind community in Tennyson Ward at Fairfield and we always need to be looking at how we can improve disability services for residents but I am concerned when we do pick a winner rather than going through a competitive process to make sure that we are getting the best product available in the marketplace and when it comes to innovative technology like this it is often where this administration goes wrong because they don't go through a really open and competitive process so I can see this is for a year I would say that it should come back to this this chamber rather than being delegated for renewal Lord Mayor I hope through you Mr Chairman that you're listening we should get an update about how it's working before any decision is made to extend it for a further two years as is proposed in here today but on the basis of it being a year only I'm prepared to to support it very briefly on the contracts and tendering I know that Deegan Ward is being relocated I'm interested in why and where central ward is being located and perhaps the Lord Mayor could update us in his summing up I also don't I'm just very interested in the missing persons memorial garden and where that is and what its purpose is because I really don't know anything about that and I'm hoping we might get some further updates about what that is and I'd also just like to make some remarks about item D the administrative amendments to city plan 2014 now based on what I can read in this it's fixing up all the mistakes you made in the Dutton Park Fairfield neighbourhood plan where you forgot to put in all the character and heritage houses that you told us you had street by street gone through and reviewed clearly that did not happen and there are a number of significant homes commercial buildings and places that are now belatedly being protected now if this council again had listened to me and perhaps there are some in councillor Shree's ward as well about the need to have better character protections and undertake mapping in our city this fix-up patch-up administration process would not need to happen and that's what this is about this is about fixing mistakes and I it is it is something that I think that you should not be proud of when we go through a two or three-year-long process the local councillors tell you it's not right and you go out and you push it through this place anyway without our consent and then you have to come back a year or so later and fix up all the mistakes that you made I don't think that reflects well on this administration and it is incumbent upon this administration to undertake a proper proper mapping of traditional character areas in our city and add them to the overlays not just this one-off thing here and there not fixing up mistakes when they happen but doing a proper audit right across the city and making sure that our overlays are updated because this piecemeal change to city plan is not best practice you know we're changing capital letters we're changing subsections you know it just reflects it reflects the fact that there are lots of mistakes being made at the time things are being drafted and further consultation and listening to the feedback from local councillors would certainly be a worthwhile start finally just on the stores board with respect to Brisbane Metro look I mean I understand councils abundance of caution by saying that they don't have the expertise to do this so they're outsourcing it to the market that actually concerns me a little bit because obviously we need to go to procurement to source the buses and things like that but we reported appointed so many outside people to run this project that there's people over here doing this job there's more a different organisation over here
councillor Johnson your time's expired there further speakers councillor Allen
thank you Mr Chair I rise to speak on item B the Better Brisbane Proposal for Voigl Inclusion Software and also to quickly answer a couple of questions on item C this administration has always been focused on ensuring our city is inclusive to everyone embracing all ages abilities and cultures this can range from providing 100% accessible buses to to disabled people and ensuring council resources are provided in various formats so that it can be read by people with different languages or reading abilities the proposal by Al Kira will support our goals of ensuring our resources are more accessible to a broader range of abilities the Voigl Inclusion Software will enable the council website to become user-friendly and support people with vision impairment or low literacy not only will it make it accessible but it will provide people with vision impairments and enhanced user experience and councillor Cumming did ask the question of how many people would benefit from this particular software while I don't have an exact figure for Brisbane certainly there are 453,000 Australians who are either classified as vision impaired or blind so clearly quite a large captive market the software goes beyond the normal screen reader solutions which are available these solutions are relatively cumbersome in that they read the entire contents of the website the Voigl Inclusion Software provides users with an audible and text-driven prompts that makes the usage much much easier I've had a very quick trial on this and I can say that while I obviously don't have a vision impairment other than wearing glasses the you can see how this software would benefit somebody who is vision impaired it's very obvious that it's a very different kind of solution so some of the highlights of the software include voice activation which enables the website to be used by anyone who requires a hands-free experience such as those people with a physical impairment it presents only it presents relevant audible and text prompts rather than going through the whole website as I mentioned earlier it provides a curated customer journey around popular tasks transactions and content which makes it much easier for people with vision impairments to undertake the normal transactions on council websites it's worth bearing in mind that this particular service was not something that council was actively looking for and was presented to us as part of a Better Brisbane Proposal and to answer councillor Johnson's point there is nothing quite like this in the marketplace at the moment as part of our proof of concept and review of the marketplace this particular solution stood out as being quite unique so for the users to be able to use the software on the website all they need to do is to download download the Voigl app on their devices and then access our website through their app alternatively council will be providing a link to the Voigl website and then the app can be downloaded from there as part of the Better Brisbane Proposal process council trialled the software with a small group of people with visual impairments including some people employed by council all of the users found the software very easy to use and enabled them to navigate the council website and enabled them to navigate the council website, to do the key transactions, and the feedback was excellent. So Better Brisbane Proposals in general allow council to go to market and look for unique solutions for some of the challenges we face. Council first established the Better Brisbane Proposal process around August 2015, and back then it was known as the Innovative Proposals Process. And this has been modelled quite closely on the state government's market-led Proposals Process. The process enables unsolicited bids to come to council. However, the guidelines specify that they must solve a problem, address a policy, or provide a community need. They also do not, you know, they're a good that isn't widely available. They tend to be very unique in nature, and they provide value for money and an advantage to the Brisbane community. Since 2015, council has received more than 280 proposals, with 11 having been implemented by council. A few examples of the Better Brisbane Proposals that have been implemented in recent times include the Mud Cat, which is the de-silting robot for the Castle Main Street drain, Genu Forums, which are employability forums for 17 to 25-year-olds, Visible Thread, which analyses new content on the website before it is published to improve language and readability of our website. And it's worth bearing in mind that Al Kira is a local company that's providing local jobs and supporting the local economy, and that's totally consistent with this administration's support of small business. Now, turning quickly to a couple of questions that councillor Cumming raised about Item C. In terms of the stormwater harvesting, the locations where that's occurring is Jack Spear Park at Indrapilly, Dunlop Park at Corinda, Forest Lake Sports Fields at Forest Lake, and the Bill LeMond Park at Loa. The question around the Jazz Club is that it's a council-owned site. And last but not least, he had a question, I believe, on the dual panel for the streaming of broadcasts here. And the reason that we've gone with two is really just to provide cover in case one of the suppliers is unable to provide the service for any particular reason. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. I just rise to enter the debate on D and E, and I'll just make some quick comments on contracts and tendering as well, Mr Chair. Just dealing with contracts and tendering first, Mr Chairman, I was the chair for lifestyles and community services when the Missing Persons Memorial project was started. I have had residents come to me, as I know other councillors in this place have, each year countless people are missing in our communities for one reason or another, whether it is that there's something that's happened to them, whether they've decided to leave their families, or other events have occurred. In my particular case, Mr Chairman, I had residents who had parents on MH370. That plane has not been found, they do not have a place to grieve, they do not have finality. And the idea was put forward by the council officers that a section at Pinnaroo Cemetery up on the north side would be created, where families could have a plaque, could go and sit and have some ability to reflect on their loved ones who are lost. They don't fit into the criteria in any of our other facilities that we have at our cemeteries across the city. And so it is great to see this council getting on and building this particular facility up at Pinnaroo. And I hope that for those families that have a missing loved one, or have lost a loved one in one of those sort of circumstances, that they will be able to find some closure and find some solitude, knowing that this facility is there for them to use. Just turning to the two items, the planning matters that we have before us, Mr Chair, so Minor H and Major J. You always know that the Labor Party haven't got anything when councillor Cumming has to turn to personal attacks on people, because there is no real substance, we know, to their planning policy that they have and the options that they have for the people of Brisbane when it comes to planning, Mr Chair. Because interesting, when you listen to councillor Cumming's words, it's what he doesn't say that should scare the people of Brisbane. Because when he was talking about Amendment J, he said the amendment does not go far enough. Doesn't go far enough. Well, what else have you got planned, councillor Cumming? You know, how much more parking are you going to ram onto people as part of your secret planning scheme amendments that you would have and you would do in this place?
Councillors will be heard in silence. Councillor Burke.
That you would do in this place through you, Mr Chairman, to councillor Cumming, who's the leader of the opposition. Because at least this administration has listened to the residents of Brisbane. And we have had that engagement with them. We've had that engagement with them, Mr Chairman, and we, they don't like it, Mr Chairman, do they? They keep, they keep trying to interrupt me, they keep trying to throw those little barbs across the council chamber. They don't, that's right, they don't like it. They take that interjection, councillor Adams, Deputy Mayor, they don't like it.
Councillor Johnson, please stop interjecting.
They don't like it when the residents of Brisbane have their say. They would rather just apply their socialist template of planning across the cities we saw under the Sawley administration, Mr Chairman. And so this administration has gone through the process of engaging with residents, and they clearly said to us, they clearly said to us, Mr Chairman, that they would like to see increases in parking rates. And so we have, despite what some councils asserted in this place, gone above the City Plan 2000 parking rates in the amendment that we have before us today. We haven't adopted what the Labor Party policy was, which was their City Plan 2000. We've gone above their parking rates, because we believe that is responding to the concern to the community and the residents of Brisbane. And so, as I said, it really is, well, what more is councillor Cumming proposing? What hasn't he said this afternoon as part of the debate, when he said the amendments don't go far enough, Mr Chairman? And to councillor Shree, who talked about extending or changes and the need for the community to be consulted, well, this will now, this amendment will now go to the state government. And given their approval, which we hope to have speedily, we will then go out for public consultation on this very issue, Mr Chairman, and the community. Your community, councillor Shree, and I'd encourage you to go out there and engage with residents. And when you and the Labor Party councillors in this place say, "Well, Plan Your Brisbane wasn't representative of the people of Brisbane", what did you do, councillor Cumming, to actually inform people about the opportunity to have their say as part of Plan Your Brisbane? What did you do, councillor Cassidy? What did you do, councillor Cook? But it was probably councillor Sutton when we were doing Plan Your Brisbane. What did you do, councillor Strunk? What did you do, councillor Griffith, to actually engage with people? Because I know that councillors on this side sent flyers out. We informed our community about having their say. So it's not good enough for you to stand up and here say, "Oh, it wasn't representative, it doesn't represent all the people of Brisbane". Well, did you stand out there with your community and engage with them and say, "Have your say, make sure your voice is heard"? Or did you choose the cheap political route, which is the one that you normally pick in this place? The one that you normally play, the cheap, easy political route, political games, and just go, "Oh, it's just an advertising campaign for the Lord Mayor"? Well, no, it was fair denkum engagement with the residents of Brisbane, and that's why we got over 15,000 ideas out of it. That's why one in five residents of Brisbane had their say. Every suburb was represented in, well, councillor Cumming describes residents having their say as rubbish. Thank you, councillor Cumming, for now understanding your view on community engagement. It is rubbish, in your own words. Two other comments that councillor Cumming made about Minor H. So apart from the personal little attacks that he decided to throw at me, there are 225 mapping changes which are being made as part of Minor H, which are rezonings. 19 of those are to do with priority development areas which are implemented by the state government, Mr Chair. Yes, there's six spelling mistakes. So if you think about the pages and pages and pages of documents that come through in a planning amendment that we do, and the number of amendments that we do, there is six spelling mistakes that are being fixed up. Six spelling mistakes. I'm sorry, Mr Chairman, I am sorry that there are six spelling mistakes in all of the planning amendments that we have brought through, not just in my time as planning chairman, but in previous times as other planning chairman. There's 106 text changes. And these text changes are reflecting either changes in state planning scheme policies. Yes, some of them are changing a capital letter to a lowercase letter, Mr Chairman. These, you know, massive issues that the Australian Labor Party want to focus on. While they're focusing on whether it should be a capital W or a little w, Mr Chairman, they're obviously not focused on the big issues that our city faces when it comes to managing the growth and making sure that we have a livable city for residents, not just now, but well into the future. Mr Chairman, obviously there is a number of changes from emerging communities to reflect the existing zonings that have been commenced as part of development applications on those sites. That is part of an ongoing process that this administration is committed to. We're committed to the residents of Brisbane to make sure that emerging communities' land across the city reflects the surrounding residential uses, where it is a low-density residential use. And we are working on that, and we're continuing to deliver that, Mr Chairman. Both Amendment H, I commend to the chamber, and particularly the response that we have in making sure that residents' voices were heard when it comes to car parking and delivering that as part of Major Amendment J. I just encourage all councillors to support the amendments this afternoon.
Further speakers? They're being done, Lord Mayor. No? Right, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I draw the council's attention to the Second Establishment and Coordination Committee Report, dated the 3rd of June. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the special report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 3rd of June 2019, be adopted.
Can I have a second, then?
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the resolution of the Establishment and Coordination Committee Special Report meeting held on Monday, the 3rd of June 2019, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. This report relates to the appointment of a new councillor for McDowell Ward. And as councillors would be aware, the new councillor for McDowell Ward, following tonight's meeting, will be Tracy Davis. And so this is something that, obviously, I'm particularly excited about. Another new member of the team, ongoing renewal in the team. And this is a, is part of a record renewal in the team, which will see, this is the third councillor coming in to the team, and we'll soon see a fourth councillor coming in as well. And when you consider that level of renewal, that's equivalent to 80% of the Labor Opposition. So we've got almost as many new councillors as they have councillors. So we're particularly excited to have that renewal. And I would point out that three men have been replaced with two women and one man. So we're increasing our diversity and gender balance, unlike those opposite who have one, one. So we are very proud to have a balanced cabinet as well. And I would say, though, that in particular in relation to Tracy, I would simply say this. I am very much looking forward to Tracy being an active contributing member of this team. I know that she will work absolutely hard for the residents of McDowell Ward. I know that she is passionate about her community. She loves her community, she understands her community. She also understands small business as well, having a small business background. And I am absolutely delighted to support this submission today and to have Tracy on board as soon as possible, working hard for the people of McDowell. As we talked about last week in the chamber, obviously there's some big shoes to fill there with Norm. But I would recommend to Tracy that you don't need to park outside anyone's house in the middle of the night, monitoring barking dogs. There's other ways to make a contribution, and I know that you will. So as I said, happy to support this submission.
Further speakers? They're being done. I'll put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it, the ayes have it on both reports. Can I draw the council's attention to the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee? Councillor Adams.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 20th of May 2019, be adopted. Seconded.
It's been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Richard, so the report of the Public and Active Transport and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 28th of May 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's presentation was on the Safer Communities Grant for Retail Crime Prevention, which I've spoken about at length in a question to the chamber as well. It was fantastic to see the ability for us to continue supporting the retailers through the CBD in the Valley Precincts, making sure that we can keep their community safe and secure through local crime prevention and some security infrastructure activities. We know that retail crime costs Brisbane businesses more than $600 million, including cost of prevention, loss of products and cash, employee trauma and compensation, property damage, repairs, upgrades, and lost productivity. So the trial that we held over 18 months saw a total of 304 retail stores participate, exceeding our target of the audience predictions. The aim was to get more retail crime actually reported, so the QPS knew about it and the chambers of commerce knew about it, using the crime prevention software platform Aura, so that the retailers could share their information and hopefully reduce the incidence of retail crime if they knew something was going on in the area as well. The feedback indicated that the smaller retailers often didn't have the time to report the retail crime and wanted a way to discuss the crime issues in their area. So a result of the trial saw a 21.4% increase in crime incidents reported directly to the QPS within Brisbane City and Fortitude Valley in that 18 months. It's a great outcome, and the National Retail Association plans to extend and establish a retail crime network with additional participants with the funding from council of $15,000 a year over two years to continue the momentum of the trial and combat retail crime. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? They're being done, I'll put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee report. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of May 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Cooper, seconded by councillor Huang, the report of the Infrastructure Committee dated Tuesday, the 28th of May 2019, be adopted. Councillor Cooper, is there any debate?
Thank you very much, Mr Chair. We had a presentation on the Player Street Connection upgrade at committee last week. Castle's Road, as councillor Huang well knows, forms an important link in the Brisbane urban corridor. It links the Ipswich motorway with the Gateway motorway, and is particularly, as this chamber would be well aware, owned and managed by the Department of Transport and Main Roads. This corridor carries about 40,000 vehicle movements on average each and every day, so a significant move, a corridor carrying significant traffic. And in the Mount Gravat Corridor Neighbourhood Plan, which went through significant community consultation in 2009 to 2012, and of course was, as part of that process, endorsed by the state government, specifically included a new road corridor from Kestles Road to Player Street. So thus was born the Player Street Extension. So both in the 2009 State Government's South East Queensland Regional Plan, page 17, for those reading along at home, and the 2017 Shaping SEQ Plan, page 109, both of those identified the upper Mount Gravat area as a principal regional activity centre. So a centre where we anticipate significant growth, significant activity to be undertaken. When we look at the statistics between 2007 and 2019, there were 52 recorded crashes at the Kestles Road and McGregor Street intersection, 30 crashes at the Kestles Road and Cremon Street intersection, and 71 crashes at the Kestles Road and Logan Road intersection. So traffic count surveys that were undertaken in 2015 show traffic volumes on Kestles Road ranging between 1,700 and 2,400 vehicles per hour in both the morning and afternoon peak periods. We in particular have at Kestles Road intersection with Logan Road and McGregor Street significant turning movements, with over 750 vehicles per hour turning right from Kestles Road into McGregor Street. The predicted traffic for 2031 identified average morning peak period delays of four to five minutes for movements from Cremon Street, and delays of seven minutes for right-turn movements from McGregor Street. As we particularly discussed at the presentation last week, traffic is currently queuing through the intersection, spilling out of the right-hand turn lane, blocking through traffic, combining, of course, with the no-right turn into Cremon Street, which operates from 7 till 9am and 3 to 6pm, Monday to Friday, and multiple traffic signals in very close proximity caused significant congestion issues. significant congestion issues. In particular, this upgrade will reduce congestion for residents trying to get to and from their homes to work, and of course, to local shopping centres, as well as improve congestion on the Brisbane urban corridor and safety. So we'll be constructing a new road connecting Player Street and Pickworth Street intersection through to Castle's Road at the McGregor Street intersection. We'll also remove the traffic signals at Castle's Road and Cremon Street intersection while modifying the Cremon Street access to be left-in only, as well as lengthening the right turn lane on Castle's Road at the Logan Road intersection, from 94 metres to 180 metres. We will be upgrading the existing traffic signals at Castle's Road and McGregor Street intersection, constructing a new right turn lane on Castle's Road at the Player Street intersection, as well as installing a new roundabout at the Player Street and Pickworth Street intersection. We'll also provide a new footpath on the new road connection for both cyclists and pedestrians. There will be multiple benefits delivered as a result of this project, including improved travel time reliability for general traffic and buses, in particular travelling along Castle's Road corridor, and traffic time reductions from Player Street on average from four minutes to 40 seconds. The benefit of this project is estimated at over $60 million, with approximately $24 million to be delivered in terms of safety benefits. So significant benefits to the community, as well as having a benefit cost ratio of 5.6, which I know that Councillor Huang is very, very proud of, in particular with relation to this project. In terms of funding, this will be fully funded by council, but we are not opposed to looking to see if other people would be willing to contribute, and we'll certainly be considering if there's federal government programmes that we may seek to get a contribution as a part of this. I know the federal member, Ross Vesta, who seems to be very happy to support us in this council chamber, delivering great infrastructure, we're keen to see opportunities that we might be able to partner with other levels of government to deliver infrastructure. So we've finalised the acquisition of four properties, we've got the tender out to market, which closes on the 21st of June. We aim to award that in early July, and we are keen to see this project well underway, delivering significant improvements for the local community. Thank you. And I've got some petitions I'm happy to comment, to respond, to make responses to. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I was hoping that Councillor Cooper would answer my question from last week's committee, and that's about the Widup Street upgrade at Nunda. My concern during the presentation was about whether the left-hand turn out of Turnbull Shopping Centre was being controlled by lights. Obviously, it's a slip lane. One of the big recommendations out of Movesafe was that council looks at controlling the slip lanes with lights and a hard left turn, but with lights or a left turn. During the presentation, Councillor Cooper and the officers were unable to confirm whether the slip lane would be controlled with lights. The main section of the cross street had a greenwalk signal and was traffic-controlled, which was good. Certainly, my view would be the slip lane needs to be controlled as well, and I hope that Councillor Cooper is going to confirm whether that is the case, because certainly there's a lot of pedestrian movements around Turnbull Shopping Centre, as well as cyclists, who I think are, they're the ones who are concerned about this. And whilst council isn't doing what they want to do, there are things council can do to make the environment safer. So I would certainly appreciate Councillor Cooper answering the question.
Further speakers, Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on Item A of the Infrastructure Committee report on the presentation of Player Street connection. Mr Chair, this is a topic that is close to my heart, and I would like to start by expressing my heartfelt appreciation to the Lord Mayor and Councillor Cooper for their vision and determination in progressing the Player Street connection, which will provide greater safety and traffic efficiency, not only to the local residents, but also to every motorist and pedestrians who uses this section of Castle's Road. As Councillor Cooper stated, between 2007 and 2018, there have been 52 crashes on the Castle's Road and McGregor Street intersection, and 30 crashes on the Castle's Road and Cremon Street intersection. Mr Chair, Castle's Road is one of the busiest freight networks linking the Gateway Motorway from the port of Brisbane to the industrial estates along Ipswich Motorway. It carries 40,000 vehicles into the southwestern suburbs of Brisbane. This section of the Castle's Road is part of Brisbane urban corridor, and areas surrounding Westfield, Gallowen City has been identified in state government's South East Queensland Regional Plan as principal regional activity centre. Mr Chair, as a busy freight corridor with 40,000 vehicles going through it every day, the Player Street connection will provide significant safety and efficiency benefits to the local residents and all traffic using this corridor. Currently, local residents can only enter and exit their homes via Cremon Street, but as Castle's Road is extremely busy and due to the close proximity between Cremon Street and Logan Road, the local residents have to wait in long queue to enter and exit this pocket of area day and night. Once the Player Street connection is completed, we will see improved travel time reliability for general traffic and buses along the Castle's Road corridor. It will improve safety and access for all road users and create an egress from local residential areas. The travel time from Player Street will be reduced to 40 seconds from four minutes. Mr Chair, I've attended one of the two information sessions held at Gallowen City for this project, and all the residents who came forward to speak to the officers were all cheerful and positive about the progress of this project, and grateful to know that this is now underway, and we are expecting the completion of this project by the end of this year. Mr Chair, may I once again thank the Lord Mayor and Councillor Cooper for their leadership in delivering this vital piece of infrastructure for the Southside residents. I commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? They're being done. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just briefly, in response to the question that Councillor Johnson put to one of the officers last week, she was asking about what pedestrian control there was on the left slip lane from the Turnbull Shopping Centre car park to Widup Street. He said that he believed it was an on-demand pedestrian crossing, and he has confirmed that that is the case. So that is, you've got a couple of examples of where we've done that. One would be Shaw Road, and you've also got Telegraph Road, where the traffic signals are triggered by a pedestrian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll now move the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The City Planning Committee report. Councillor Burke.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of May 2019, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair.
It's been moved by Councillor Burke, seconded by Councillor Toomey, that the report of the City Planning Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 28th of May 2019, be adopted. Is there any, excuse me, is there any debate, Councillor Burke?
Mr Chairman, there's a number of items on the committee report from last week, but just quickly, to the urgency motion we had earlier about the school, the state government school at Tewong, council provided its feedback on the ministerial infrastructure designation back in October last year, and we highlighted a range of concerns, as we do quite often with ministerial infrastructure designations, and about their ability to actually capture things that we would capture as part of a traditional development application through the council planning scheme. And I can reliably inform councillor Shree that we did raise the ecological issues about the site and the need to make sure that they were protected as part of any development that may occur on the site. There was an update to the committee last week about the Oxley and Yoronga priority development areas. Council has made its submissions on these two areas. We raised a number of concerns, and the council officers took the committee through the specific concerns that council has had with these two areas, and there's four committee petitions that I'm more than happy to debate in the chamber. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on Item A, the Oxley and Yoronga priority development areas, both of which are in Tennyson Ward, and one of which used to be in councillor Burke's ward of Jamboree. And I'll say a little bit more about this in just a moment. Yes, he should run out of the chamber. Now, let me say that having been through the state government's consultation processes to date, and having been actively engaged and had meetings with the senior officers from Economic Development Queensland, I can confidently say that they have been more inclusive in speaking to me than my own council has ever, ever, ever been. They've taken my calls, they've answered my questions, they've allowed me to engage in the public planning process, and they've certainly accepted my submissions. Whether they are going to do anything about the concerns that I've raised in my submissions to them, I don't know yet, because they have not finalised either of these two planning schemes. But I'd like to start with Yoronga. There is good and bad in the proposal for Yoronga. The good is that the site provides a permanent home for the Yoronga Community Centre. This is something that our community strongly supports, and certainly is something that state government should be commended for. This will enhance community services in our community, and is something that will absolutely be a long-term benefit to Yoronga and Annelie residents who live around this site. And I know that the Yoronga Community Centre are working with the state government. There are a number of other users that will co-locate with them, and it's a very good outcome for them to have a permanent home. There are a number of problematic issues that I've raised in my submission with the state, principally the decision to allow sort of six to eight storeys of units on this site, and the traffic implications of creating a medium-density, a medium-density site so close to, you know, really busy park, educational, recreational area. The other good thing that is happening, though, is about a hectare of the site being given over to Yoronga State High School to allow them to fully create their second oval, which they've only had a partial second oval. So there's good and there's bad in this, and I think that, I'm sure councillor Burke's intention here has been a political one, to try and bag the state government, and there are reasons to be critical, there are reasons to be critical of some of the things that they are doing. Just like council's neighbourhood plans, there are problems with what is proposed in these PDAs, and there is a lack of information about specific details about where roads will go, how the drainage will be improved, and those things are very problematic, and I've made my views very clear to the state government. I'd like to talk about Oxley particularly, that one's been going a bit longer and is further advanced. Like Yoronga, there are very good, oh, but what I will say about Yoronga is, I note councillor Burke's been critical of allowing medium-density in Yoronga. The problem with that is, they're criticizing the state government for allowing medium-density in Yoronga when they have, as council and as the planning chair, oversighted a department that has allowed medium-density under council's rules, on the RSPCA site, down at the Retirement Village site, the seven storeys down on the Retirement Village site. So council's trying to criticize the state government and say, you can't possibly have medium-density there. Meanwhile, 150 metres down the road, council's saying, sure, to private developers, you can slap up five or seven storeys as much as you want. Now, to me, that's hypocrisy. That is hypocrisy. There is only one person who has consistently been opposing medium-density in Yoronga, and that would be me, Nicole Johnston, the councillor for Tennyson. And we know there are some liberals in Yoronga who are very keen on more medium-density, and I think this administration might be taking a little bit of advice from them, which I suggest would be a little bit dangerous if they are. But I would like to say something about Oxley PDA. I just want to say that I know that Jessica Pugh, the state member there, has been working very hard to try and find a good outcome for her community. I've got to know Jess a little bit over the time that she's run, and I think she's a very genuine person in trying to find a good outcome here. There are some very good things being offered in that PDA site as well. There is a new community centre, there is a new community garden, the ovals on the lower part of the site are being handed back to council, hopefully, that's what I lobbied the Lord Mayor for, and that's what seems to have been agreed, at least in principle, with the state government. It's an issue that I've spoke to the new Lord Mayor about in my meeting with him two weeks ago, about the need to ensure that that land is handed over to council so it can form part of our sport and recreational offer. My understanding is it will be handed over without any cost, and whilst we may have some work to do, it's being used for Pony Club and a few things now, it certainly would be a great addition, particularly given the needs of junior sport in the southwestern suburbs. We need more sporting fields desperately, and this is a great outcome that won't cost council money. All it will take is more consultation with the state government and not the politicking of councillor Burke. I want a practical outcome here, that is what I said to the Lord Mayor in my meeting. We do not want another RSPCA debacle where the state's willing to give us land, and because of diabolical party political actions, it doesn't happen. This can be an extremely good outcome for the community if we can get this land. There are significant problems on this site, though, with traffic access, with landslide, and with the proposal for medium-density aged care. Like I have everywhere else, I don't believe we should be putting medium-density into this area. Certainly aged care, there's already a lot of aged care in that part of the world, whether that's the right mix. You know, there's Kenossa, there's Beth Eden, there's Bethesda, there's a cinnamon park kind of ones, you know, there's so much already in that area. Oh, Kingsford at Corinda, you know, so there's some issues around that. But again, now this is where councillor Burke's, I can't, two-faced hypocrisy, is just extraordinary. As the local councillor, he has allowed medium-density on the old Hopeton site on Clydeton Avenue.
Councillor, there's a sort of light chatter in the room. Can everyone just allow the councillor to be heard in silence, please?
He's allowed medium-density in Corinda, just up the street, just up the street. Now, I suspect he didn't even oppose this as the local councillor. But now again, he's saying under his watch, his watch, that he doesn't think there should be six storeys. Meanwhile, his own council planning team have allowed six storeys down the street.
Councillors, I meant it when I said, please reduce the chat in the room. I meant that. Councillor Johnston.
Yep, thank you. All right, I'm happy to keep going on, you know. I just think the hypocrisy of what this council is doing by allowing private development to do six storeys, but then saying to the state government, no, you can't do it, that's terrible. That is terrible. You have to be consistent. You have allowed this in other parts of the city, and you should not have. You should not have. And now because it suits you for political purposes, you're kicking up a fuss. It doesn't look good. The other issue, of course, you know, with Oxley is, we obviously need a road solution there. It's unclear how that development will impact on our road network. That needs to be resolved, and we need to make sure that there are no adverse traffic impacts for the 17-mile Rocks Road residents. It is a large, busy road, 16,000 vehicles a day, it's not well serviced, there's a lot of rat running, and those issues need to be resolved. But what I will say here is councillor Burke's attempt to politicise this means that it's putting at risk some of the positive things that we can get out of this for our community, like additional sporting fields for council, council's community sporting clubs. I don't want to see that put at risk for the sake of politics. I feel that this council's position of allowing private developers to build five, six and seven storeys in this area, which at the time I have overwhelmingly said was wrong, and then to somehow say to council, well, we can do it on our land, but you can't do it on your land, is so hypocritical, and it leaves you open to such, it leaves you open to this. It's just terrible. There is no way that we should be allowing six-storey buildings in these areas, and we shouldn't have done it on council land either, like the RSPCA, which was parkland originally. And this council ignored nearly three, well, 350 submissions there. So I'll just say that...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly on Item C, the petition signed by 144 residents asking council to refuse the development application at Two Oxford Street Blimber. Mr Chair, I ask that Item C be taken seriatum for voting only.
Item C be taken seriatum for the purpose of voting, correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr Chair, this petition was presented back in February at a time when my community was very upset about the development application for this site, which is directly next door to the historic Blimber Ferry Terminal. Some of the petitioner's concerns are around the impact on and loss of amenity due to the bulk and scale of the development, with setbacks in building heights not within the acceptable... acceptable outcomes. Also, Mr Chair, non-compliance with the planning scheme. They were also concerned about insufficient car parking as the revised plans removed all onsite parking and vehicle access. And finally, there were concerns regarding the public park component of the development and impact on the historic Belimba Ferry Terminal. Mr Chair, this site is just over 1,000 metres squared and is zoned for commercial use. One of the reasons this petition was launched was due to this application being deemed to be code assessable and local residents approached me as their local councillor and wanted to express their collective objection to the development for a range of reasons that I've already outlined above. Mr Chair, even though this was a code assessable application, many of my residents also submitted written objections, some of which I want to read into the record today. I think it's important for the chamber to hear some of these concerns because these residents who have taken the time to make these submissions do not have any rights of appeal because of the code assessable nature of the application and I think their voices should be heard now, given their concerns have been ignored by the petition response today. So I'll just briefly touch on a couple of them. One person who was concerned about the Belimba Ferry Terminal and the impact on that building says, this building is a historic icon that has been recently refurbished at considerable expense, partly to maintain the heritage value of the entrance. This design overshadows the terminal and clashes with its style and character. Another person says, we have grave concerns regarding the increased traffic, pedestrian congestion and manoeuvrability of service vehicles. Our other main concern is the noise impact that this development may incur, bearing in mind that this is a residential area and at present is relatively quiet. Another person says, the proposed removal of all onsite car parking spaces and vehicle access and servicing areas from the application would result in car parking that is inadequate to accommodate the parking demand of the proposed development and will result in overflow of car parking to adjacent premises and adjacent streets, particularly within the context of Oxford Street, which is characterised by limited on-street car parking that is in very high demand. Another local says, I'm a local resident in Belimba and member of the Belimba District Historical Society, which is a voluntary community group with more than 40 members. Belimba District Historical Society aims to document and record the cultural and heritage significance of the Belimba district, so as development continues, people will have access to details of the events of the past. It is my view, the application has not appropriately considered the development is near a Queensland heritage place. The applicant has not provided a heritage, provided a heritage impact assessment report which addresses the relationship of any proposed new building with the surrounding environment, which is essential in determining the heritage value and establishing a basis to protect the heritage of a Queensland heritage place, being the Belimba Ferry Terminal. I would like to highlight some of the key background to reinforce why heritage values are important to Belimba. The Brisbane River is not just a geographical feature, more than in any other state capital, it is unique linkage that gives the city its name and binds it together. It snakes through the city, creating peninsulas that have defined suburbs and Belimba is the most eastern of these land features. Connection to the river has been and continues to be a significant cultural connection for the residents of Belimba. The Brisbane City Council has demonstrated a commitment by making it a planning principle that development or redevelopment of sites on the river make available river access as part of their development conditions. The proposal does not pay respect to the historic Oxford Street, Belimba Ferry Terminal and there is no setback along the river, street frontage or public walkway along the river. Other sites developed in Belimba with river frontages have had to provide the council public land at 10 metres wide for the provision of public walkways and public access to the river. And finally, another person's submission details that the footprint of the proposed building has altered with the building being much closer to the river than what is allowed in the neighbourhood plan code and is not in keeping with council's intention of providing attractive, easy access to the river for all residents. No onsite car parking or service areas are to be provided, which will further congest the existing small drop-off area and surrounding streets which are already heavily congested. A full roof has been added to the top level, which contravenes the height limits and detrimentally impacts on adjoining and surrounding properties with no sensitive transition provided to adjoining low-density residential areas in Key Street. As a long-term resident of the area and one in favour of development, I believe this development is completely inappropriate for this site and if approved will detrimentally impact on the livability and values of the immediate and surrounding homes and apartments. Mr Chair, I want to thank my residents for the time that they took to make submissions on this application, I don't have time to go through them all today and I also want to thank the 144 people who signed this petition before us today, seeking to ensure that their voices were heard by this chamber. Mr Chair, as a local councillor, I can't support the recommendation today which simply advises residents that the DA has been approved. I'm disappointed that we will see this development proceed, which will have a range of direct negative impacts for my residents and on the broader Oxford Street precinct. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being done, councillor Burke.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. I just rise to respond to councillor Cook. The Belimba Ferry Terminal is state heritage listed, SAR provided their response and provided no conditions as part of their response on that. And given that the development application is subject to declaratory action within the Planning Environment Court, I'm not going to make any further comments on that particular DA.
All right, I will now put the resolution for items A, B, D and E, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. In regards to item C, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And to the contrary, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Vision.
Vision called by councillor Cook and councillor Cunningham. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and seven against.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of May, 2019 be adopted.
It's been moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Richards, that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee dated Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just briefly, at the committee on the 28th of May, where I was ably represented by councillor Richards, thank you councillor Richards, we had a presentation from the council officers on Henlon Park upgrade. There was a petition on revoking the Mount Coother zip line and two Ward Park trust funds. In relation to the question this morning, the total budget for carbon neutral council in 2018/19 is $6.297 million. The breakdown of the expenditure, as councillor Johnson requested, for 2018/19 is as follows. I note she is not in the chamber to hear, so hopefully she'll read it from hand side. Energy efficiency and admission reduction projects is 25.6% of the budget. Renewal energy purchases is 33.6% of the project. Carbon offset is 26%. Corporate overheads, 8.7%. And unspent, which is the carryover, is 6.1%. I'm happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being done, I'll put the resolution. Oh, councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I rise to speak on item A. I was delighted to receive the update on the upgrade and revitalisation of Henlon Park at Stones Corner. This is large, open green space is one that I know very well, having spent many enjoyable hours there with my family. The project is a priority precinct included in the Norman Creek 2012 to 31 master plan. The park will be transformed into an attractive and versatile public space that supports the growing area, creating a vibrant urban oasis. Residents of my ward have been highly engaged with this project. The concept plan was developed through community consultation in early 2018, including a co-design workshop and online survey, as well as extensive technical investigations and community feedback in late 2018. One of the key themes that guides the concept plan for Henlon Park is flood management and topography. Anecdotally, we see out-of-channel flood flow two to three times a year on average through the park and any local resident knows the area is prone to flooding. So council has worked to find a balance between converting the concrete waterway to a more natural state and ensuring a non-worsening effect on flooding, both locally and within the wider catchment. To support this, the park design included extensive technical investigations. This included careful consideration of the location, width and depth of the waterway, surrounding vegetation and park facilities. The channel proposed within the concept design will be slightly wider than the current concrete channel. The wider channel will help to slow down the speed of water when it runs through the park during flood events. This will be done through a small proposed wetland, which will also help remove pollutants and allow sediments to settle out. Similar to the main waterway channel, the small wetland will have constant low flow of fresh water. The small wetland aims to ensure, aims to support water quality improvement, provide habitat for rich biodiversity areas with new vegetation and create a new place for residents and visitors to enjoy nature. With a nearby kindergarten and the popular park run, I believe this park project will attract hundreds of big and little kids and help us all learn about the value and the force of nature. Local residents have also raised with me personally the requirement for local toilet facilities within the park precinct and I'm advocating for that on their behalf. Council will also be constructing an underpass at Logan Road in Stones Corner as part of this project, similar to the access under Cornwall, Juliet and Ridge Streets. This will provide alternative access under Logan Road to link with Gladder Street, making it a safer alternative for active school travel. Unfortunately, due to the tidal nature of Norman Creek in Stones Corner, it will not be feasible to make it an all-weather access. Chair, I'm looking forward to this project and commend the officers for their work so far.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Field Services report. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to turn to councillor Strunk's question earlier in the meeting about the sustainable nappy cashback programme and to advise, of course, that it raises awareness of the problems associated with disposable nappies and motivates residents to make the switch from single-use disposable nappies to modern cloth nappies. So councillor Strunk, we have had 307 families switch to reusable nappies through the programme and with the average baby using 4,000 nappies, that's an approximate total of 1,220,000 nappies removed from Brisbane's landfill. Of course, there is no data on exact weights as this cannot be determined, however, we estimate this to be in excess of four to five tonnes over the baby's nappy use life if these families stick to the programme. So councillor Strunk, as I said earlier, we're very pleased with this programme, that it is raising the awareness of keeping waste from landfill. Chair, moving to last week's committee, we had a presentation from our manager, Asset Services, on the use of resin-based concrete in the field. The committee was given an informative presentation about how council has been investigating alternatives, including trialling resin-based concrete since April this year after proof of concept commenced in December 2018. The resin-based concrete provides a cost-saving of approximately 50% and has a quicker setting time. While findings have shown cost-benefit sufficiency on small sites and the speed, there has been some challenges identified, for example, not suitable around trees or on larger sites. Other introductions include alternatives to the articulated joint product and the reinforcement of concrete with polymer fibre. I would like to thank our officers for the incredible work that they do in the field and Chair, I commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just rise to speak on item A, the committee presentation which was about the use of a resin-based concrete in the field. This was to do with footpaths, as we know traditionally, when we have a problem with a footpath that needs to be repaired, council officers will need to go out there, fence it off so it becomes unusable to residents. They then have to rip up the old concrete and then they have to, traditionally, depending on the size, they put in Rio forcing and then they have to lay the concrete and then they have to wait for it to set and then they come back a week or so, or two weeks later and remove all that piece of infrastructure around so that footpath is then usable for residents to walk on. With this new resin-based concrete that the officers are trialling, most of that procedure is now not necessary, they're able to go out there, just grind the footpath down to the suitable level, fill it with the resin and then it's pretty much able to be walked on within sort of, you know, minutes of being finished. In fact, that was demonstrated by the use of a video, a presentation which showed a truck backing over a piece of concrete that had actually not long been fixed up with this resin base, so it was quite timely. It wasn't a planned demonstration, but it happened nevertheless and I think it was it was very timely to show us just how great this product is. The other product that they talked about was the fibre, so I don't know if anyone's ever done concreting, I've actually had the misfortune of having to do some concreting with my husband over the years. It's not a nice job, it's pretty hard yakka, especially in the sun because the concrete's going off faster than you can work. But basically, the Rio goes down and you have, as the concrete's been poured, you have a hook that you have to lift the Rio up to a certain depth within the concrete and this fibre, now that you don't need to use that Rio bar, is a great innovation and my hat's off to the officers for all the work that they do in this field. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being done, councillor Howard. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Matic.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Matic, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just briefly, the committee presentation was the Active and Healthy Programme. I'd like to thank the officers for the presentation, but also providing a really informative update on the programme as a whole and looking at the highlights and particularly when you see the increase in the number of participants from this programme on year-on-year, you could see that, you know, we're up to 130,000 in just last year's programme. These programmes continue to be a core part of council's business and it's such a popular array of services covering all ages and all groups and particularly all interests as well and just goes to show that as a division, this is an important part of more to see and do across our city and making sure that we continue that strong connection with community and providing those services that keep them active and engaged with not only the community but with themselves as well. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being done, I'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The Finance and Administration Committee report. Councillor Allen.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of May, 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor McGlocklin, that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 28th of May, 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Mr Chair, at the committee meeting last week, we had a presentation on the rates channel and a bit of an update on how the various options are performing, particularly with respect to E-Rates, our paperless billing solution. We continue to see good growth in We continue to see good growth in residents seeking that option. This was implemented in July 2016, and certainly, as of the presentation, 83,000 ratepayers are currently registered for this particular solution. We continue to provide residents with a paper solution, if that's their preference, but certainly, to the extent possible, we are encouraging residents to take up the E-Rates solution. We are providing education through our website and posters and inserts in their paper bills to encourage them to go down this path. As I mentioned, we've got 83,000 people currently registered, and we are seeing consistent growth quarter-on-quarter, so that's very, very pleasing. Some of the benefits of having residents convert to E-Rates is that it reduces our landfill by one tonne per annum, we save more than 10 tonnes of paper per year, there's 269,000 litres of water avoided through paper production, and 15 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions are avoided each year, so certainly a very positive environmental benefit there. On the other side of the rates channels discussion is obviously our payment options, and one of the things that we are looking to provide residents with is a wide range of rates payment solutions. There are people who still like to wander down to a post office or mail in a cheque, so that's fine, we allow them to do that, but increasingly, people are turning to electronic means, and we offer a wide range of solutions for payments as well. The second item in the committee was a regular committee report, which is our quarterly report on our receivables, our financial position, our payables and our provisions, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the notice of motion at item 6A on the agenda. Deputy Mayor, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this council calls on the state government to commit to conserving the bushland at 181941 and 51 Don Young Road, and 30 Forest Circuit, and 10192029 and 30 Innovation Circuit, and 266 MacRavat Road, Nathan.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond. Is there any debate? The deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have raised this motion today because I am concerned about this land, at these many lots, as you can see, there's many lots, which are adjacent to the Tui Forest in Maruka, down near Griffith University, and that the issue that they may be sold by the government arm, as Minister Bailey calls it, the Economic Development Queensland Government Arm that currently manages these sites, and they are looking to sell for a commercial dollar. Excuse me. What we saw within the last week was some very large clearing along the boundary at the back of these lots where they back on to Tui Forest. We have heard from the local state member that this is nothing but ensuring that there is fire breaks under the Brisbane City Council Fire Maintenance Plan, but when you speak to council officers, it is very clear, there is only one reason you need a fire maintenance break between a forest and another bit of forest, and that's if you are establishing those lots to be sold to the market. So you wouldn't need the fire maintenance break if it continued to be forest, because it could be accessed from all of those many cul-de-sacs, as you see in the addresses that I just called out there. The fire break has been done under the maintenance plan, because I believe that EDQ is preparing for sale. Now, since this has actually occurred in the last week, there was quite an uproar by the Tui Forest Wildlife Facebook page, as well as the Tui, the Taragindi Community Facebook page, and Minister Bailey has assured residents, and myself last night at Neighbourhood Watch as well, that EDQ are not selling these properties. Now, I am having total respect to Minister Bailey in this, I'm sure he's being told that these lots are not being sold, but they are being managed by Economic Development Queensland, and there is only one KPI for Economic Development Queensland, and that is to make money for the state government. I do know a letter was sent to Minister Bailey within the last 12 months, asking Minister Dick to please sell the land to council at a concessional rate, so that it could be preserved as part of the Tui Forest. His response was, no. If the council want it, they can pay full commercial value. So if Minister Dick, the infrastructure minister, is making it clear that only full commercial value is the only option for this land, my guess is that they are not looking at council as being the only buying opportunity for these landblocks that we see here at Maruka. I'm sure councillor Griffiths is going to stand up today and have a chat as well, it is actually within his ward, and I recognise that, it is just on my boundary, but obviously Tui Forest within the Holland Park ward as well. And councillor Griffiths, to his credit, has finally gotten a petition up to ask the state, asking Brisbane City Council to purchase state government-owned land at all of those addresses, and making sure. It is urgent to negotiate this purchase of land. It sounds to me like councillor Griffiths also doesn't believe Minister Bailey, that this land is not going to be sold off. In his own words, it is urgent to protect the existing koala habitat and significant flora and fauna located in this environment, significant area, and I totally agree with him, because what this shows is Minister Bailey may truly believe that EDQ is not going to sell this land off, but I don't think councillor Griffiths believes it, and I definitely don't believe it as well. The problem I have with the petition being put forward by councillor Griffiths and the suggestion being put forward by Minister Dick is this is the state government asking ratepayers to pay for taxpayers' land. This is not the same situation that we saw in MacRavat East, whereas private property, private property...
Councillors will be heard in silence. councillor Adams.
Private property, that was cleared legally, unfortunately, that lost a large part of habitat, that the only way we could protect that as well was to buy it, to subdivide, to sell off the property, and the amount of money, we'll get money back from the property that we're selling up and re-vegetate it as koala bushland.
Councillors will be heard in silence, please. councillor Adams.
This is state government land. This is not the state government's private little property portfolio, this is the land that belongs to the people of Queensland and the residents of Brisbane in this area.
Councillor Johnston, if someone interjected on you like this, you'd be very upset, and I did ask many times while you were speaking for councillors to be quiet. Could you please offer the same courtesy to others? councillor Adams.
Unfortunately, we do see a letter, finally again, from councillor Griffiths today, and I'll leave the final part to councillor McLaughlin to explain, asking council to commence negotiations to reach a commercial and environmental outcome that meets the needs of EDQ. Here we have a local councillor who is saying, we need to supply money to EDQ. So we have councillor Griffith standing up, please, please, prop up the floundering state government's budget. You know what this comes down to? Asset sales. This is asset sales, pure and simple, commercial value for the people of Brisbane and Queensland's koala habitat. Koala habitat. That is not theirs. It is in trust for the people of Queensland, but they will not even, Minister Dick has said it back to Minister Bailey, only on a commercial value. That is a very, very disappointing outcome from this government, but I'm not surprised, because I'm sure we'll see, as the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, a budget that comes out just before Origin, you know, during the middle of it all going on, that there will be a lot to make sure is not seen.
Councillors, please. councillor Griffiths, councillor Cook, I've already named you a few times, please don't make me use the formal processes. councillor Adams.
Because unfortunately, in the past, we did see Labour governments hand back significant bushland to Brisbane City Council. Wick Street and Carrendale, MacRavat Capella Bar Road, it up in MacRavat, both education Queensland sites, both cited for significant infrastructure to go there, but were handed back, both handed back, in full ownership, out of peppercorn agreement, to Brisbane City Council to maintain as significant bushland sites. The state government needs to step up here, they need to step up, and they need to stand beside this clean, green and sustainable city council. This is where Jackie Trad's green credentials hit the road. Forget about a Darnie, Jackie, that didn't work for you, how about you turn around and save some serious bushland and koala habitat right here in Brisbane, particularly when you're running Tui and you're going to butt up to it in the next election. Something she could probably think about. We are happy to discuss the arrangement of this bushland with the state government, we are happy to negotiate, but we will not be paying full commercial price to the state government for land that they could very easily hand back to us to add to the Tui Forest bushland, and do exactly what councillor Griffiths is saying, make sure that we maintain an important preservation area for our ecological management of our areas. It is important to remember, this is not their purse of asset sales to help their floundering budget. Talk with council, hand it back to us, we will maintain it as we are maintaining all our corridors, but not at a commercial price.
Further speakers? There being councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you. I thought the Labour Party might want to get up and speak on this, but apparently not. Mr Chair, I'm very happy to rise to speak to this motion today, as you may be aware, and others in the chamber will be aware, that I first raised this issue in this place on the 19th of February, one of the first meetings back for the year, after officers in the news branch brought the matter to my attention when I was in the chair's role, and they pointed out to me the high ecological values of this land, but we're also most concerned about the outrageous demand of the state government to pay full market value for it. The number that was being quoted, $6 million, just shy of six hectares, $6 million, a million dollars a hectare, that EDQ wants to receive for this land, and that's what they want from council in order to protect it. It's just outrageous, they have no shame. You'll recall that I did table a letter here in this place, written by the member for Miller, Mark Bailey, to the Minister for State Development, Cameron Dick. Mark Bailey, doing his job representing a constituent who was concerned about the intention of the state to bulldoze six hectares of prime habitat, prime koala habitat. The member for Miller ended his letter to Minister Dick, and I quoted, saying, thanking him for his assistance in consideration of this important environmental matter. Of course, we heard nothing but deafening silence from the councillor for Maruka. He lacks the courage to stand up and be counted on any issue if it involves taking on the state Labour government, even when shown the way by his factional ally, Mark Bailey. I also wrote, I also wrote to Minister Dick in February on the same matter, I did get a response in April, I'll return to that in a moment. Mr Chair, in this place, on the 12th of March, I again raised the issue of the state's intention to extract profit ahead of protecting koala habitat from its land bank at Nathan. Of course, in the meantime, silence still from the councillor for Maruka. I pleaded with him in that meeting to join with his state counterpart, Mark Bailey, to join with us here, to demand that the state land, under the control of its commercialised business unit, Economic Development Queensland, or EDQ, be preserved for koala habitat by providing it to council for a nominal price, not selling it for development. Again, no response for the councillor for Maruka. He was awakened, it appears, finally, by an article in the Southern Cross, Southern Star, five weeks ago, on the 29th of May, and surprise, surprise, oh, the article reads, 'Community fears for koalas overplan bushland clearing', the story was headline, picking up on Tui Forest Wildlife Facebook post, hashtag 'Protect our koalas', hashtag 'Tui Forest slowly disappearing', following issues raised by councillor Adams. And surprise, surprise, the next day, the Lord Mayor receives a memo from councillor Griffiths, a memo dated the 30th of May, saying that he had recently been approached by a number of concerned residents about the Nathan land and the implications of its clearing for future development. Recently, we've been raising this issue in here since the 12th of February, and nearly four months later, the member for Maruka has finally stirred into action. The Shadow Chair for Environment suddenly realises he might have an issue right on his doorstep, and he should get involved in the issue. Well, we do thank him for his late-in-the-day conversion to the cause. In his memo, the councillor for Maruka says, he understands that council has endeavoured to negotiate with EDQ to acquire this land through the bushland acquisition levy. Yes, well, exactly what we said here, starting in February. We believe that the state government should follow the lead of the federal government when it transferred land to council, Poo Corner Land, you'll recall, for bushland preservation purposes. The feds charged a dollar, the state got a $90,000 windfall on the stamp duty, but there was still revenue in the deal for the state, but the feds transferred it to council for a dollar and good on them. And so, let's be clear, Mr Chair, the Nathan estate, the six hectares, is land owned by the people of Queensland, as councillor Adams said, but according to Minister Dick, and I mentioned it earlier in my piece, his letter, I didn't receive a response from Minister Dick, he says the land is, I quote, owned by the Minister for Economic Development Queensland. That's him. The land is owned, he says, by the Minister for Economic Development Queensland. So he owns it, he says, and he will decide what to do with it. That's what he says in his letter, and here it is. It's interesting, though, that there's a little political barb in here. He says, his hands are tied because of legislation introduced by the former Liberal National Party government, EDQ is, I quote his letter, required to operate commercially, and would be happy to consider an offer from council on that basis, end quote. So, please, please forgive me, councillor, but Campbell Newman and Jeff Seeny made me do it, legislation that was introduced in 2012. So, what, you know, they could turn on a dime to suddenly approve of the Darnie mine, but after years of obstruction, but here saying, they have no option other than to sell publicly-owned land at commercial rates, they're obligated by legislation introduced in 2012, seven years ago. So this is land, as councillor Adams said, owned by, he's saying that the ratepayers of Brisbane should pay commercial rates for land they already own as taxpayers. So, and here's the legislation, I went and got a copy of it, here it is, that's the legislation, the Economic Development Act 2012, and it does say that the Minister for Economic Development Queensland must, to the extent practicable, carry out its functions on a commercial basis, it does say that. But it also provides, and it's in the legislation, discretionary powers. Under a section called 'conditional disposal of land or other property', it says, the minister may impose a condition or restriction on the disposal of land or other property to an entity. In other words, he, the minister, he owns the land, he told me, can negotiate. He didn't quote that in his letter to me, he did quote that paragraph. So, Mr Chair, again, I call on the state government, and I call on Labour councillors in this place, to abandon their outrageous asset sale of the Nathan land, the land bank, to provide it to council for a peppercorn rate. The minister should stop hiding behind legislation introduced seven years ago, and which he now finds convenient to use for his asset sales programme, to sell their land bank, to flog off land that's already owned by the public. So why do we have to urgently negotiate to purchase land that is already in public hands? This land, Mr Chair, should be preserved for all time as koala habitat, and would be if it were transferred at a peppercorn rate to council.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I rise to speak on the motion before us today, and certainly, I have no problem in supporting the motion, but in listening to the debate and understanding the intention of the LNP, there's a few things that I'd like to put on the record. Firstly, our whole purpose, as I understand it, is to ensure that, as a city, we are protecting koala habitat. I would have thought that that is the priority of both, well, all levels of government, federal, state and council. I would have thought that a Lord Mayor who had a, what was it, page three story in the Sunday Mail, hugging a koala, would be making an effort to ensure that the image that he wants to project for our city is reflected in our actions as a city council. that he wants to project for our city is reflected in our actions as a city council. And I would just say that, again, it's still pretty new in the, in the job, it's only been a couple of months, but if all your administration is going to be about is party politics, that is not the way to run the city. It is absolutely not the way to run the city. So, the political point scoring that's going on here tonight is, I think, it doesn't reflect well on anybody. So, if this image is to mean anything whatsoever of the Lord Mayor cuddling a koala, it must mean that our priority and the issues at stake here are about protecting koala habitat. Now, in my view, the first way to go about this is to put pressure on the state government to do the right thing. Clearly, they own the land, and the best outcome here is to ensure that it is protected and continues to be protected state forest. I find councillor McLaughlin's comments extremely interesting. He points out that he's checked and councillor Dick does have the ability to negotiate an outcome.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Owen.
I just want to clarify, I think councillor Johnston's referring to minister Dick rather than councillor Dick.
Please, please be mindful of using the correct titles, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, yeah, Cameron Dick, the minister, yes, that's who I'm referring to, apologies. But I think what's really interesting is councillor McLaughlin is fully aware of these provisions within the EDQ legislation, that there can be a conditional disposal of land. Now, I'm wondering, when he got the letter back from the minister saying, 'Pay us $6 million', did he write back saying, 'Well, we'll give you $5?', did he write back saying, 'We'll give you $100,000?', did he write back saying, 'We'll give you $10,000?', did he write back saying, 'No, no, no, we would like you to exercise this provision under your legislation to give it to us on a conditional basis and use your discretion?'. Did the minute, did our chairman of Parks, Environment and Sustainability, at that point, take any action to undertake negotiations in good faith with the state government, who clearly are trying to use some sort of commercial bargaining power here? But did our council and the leader of our environmental department at that time write back saying, 'No, no, no, minister, you've got it wrong, your legislation allows you to give this land to us, or it allows you to negotiate, we're prepared to offer $100,000?'. Yeah, table the letter for us, let's have a look. Table the letter you wrote back to the minister, saying that you wanted to ensure this land was protected and you wanted to negotiate an outcome, because I don't think one got written, number one. So, what's the next thing that happens? You identified a problem, which is a good thing. You identified a problem, but you made no effort to resolve it in a positive, transparent and proactive way on behalf of the residents of our city. So, what's the next thing that happens? Councillor Adams comes in here to play politics. Now, what is galling about councillor Adams leading the charge on this is that it's only a few weeks ago that she got a roll gold solution where three residential house blocks that are cleared or have palm trees on them, this council raced out and within about a week spent $5.2 million buying land with no trees and no koala habitat on them. So, let's be clear, what's the difference between the roll gold solution for councillor Adams and what is the difference between the current situation in Nathan? Could it be that it's an LNP ward and the $5.2 million that this council spent on councillor Adams to bail out one of the most marginal council wards in this city, this council thought was a good idea? Yet when it comes, yet when it comes to looking at a solution for Nathan and what is arguably much more significant koala habitat, this administration won't even consider it. Not only will they not consider it, but councillor Adams and councillor McLaughlin have criticised the local-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
No doubt.
She was not supportive of this council buying back that land, I can tell you, and she's on the record now, she's happy to have land bought back in her ward for her benefit, $5.2 million for three house blocks in a residential area with a few palm trees on them, not a koala in sight.
Councillor Johnston, can I just, councillor Johnston, can I just bring you back to the substantive motion, please?
Yeah, thanks, yeah. And this is the issue, that this administration is prepared to fight in its own LNP wards and not for the rest of Brisbane. Now, the Lord Mayor and all of the chairman here were elected to govern on behalf of all residents of Brisbane, and they are not doing so. I find it, I find it absolutely astonishing that they're trying to say the state are treating their land terribly when this administration spent the last year trashing Mount Cotha with its zip line proposal. So, you know, the form that you have on these issues is undermining your argument at every step. Now, let me be clear again, I believe the state should do the right thing here and protect this land. If they're not prepared to protect it, then we should, as a council, do everything in our power, not just our basic, you know, we'll write a letter and then we'll stop trying, we should do everything in our power to ensure we get this land. Because this administration has terrible form. The state government was prepared to give the RSPCA site at Yaronga to council for free, and this administration knocked it back. That was appalling. There's now five-storey units on parkland. We've got the same issue at Oxley at the moment, and if this administration lets that land go and does not preserve the bushland and the sport and recreation land there, which I'm told we are getting for nothing, that will be an appalling reflection on you. So, stop playing politics, let's find a good solution here. I think councillor Griffith has been courageous in stepping up for his community, and he has done the right thing here. And yes, they are laughing, they are laughing at the people of Acacia Ridge, they are laughing at the people of Taragindi, of Maruka, they are laughing at the people of Coopers Plains, who have elected councillor Griffith to speak for them, to speak for them. And he is doing that.
Councillors will be heard in silence.
He is doing that. He has, he has. And I would just say to this administration that you need to look to your own conduct. Councillor Hammond needs to step in, councillor McLaughlin clearly dropped the ball as the Parks chairman. We obviously, if we have knowledge, which is shared with us very helpfully, that we can negotiate, we should be negotiating. Why would you stop at the first offer? They say $6 million, go back with the lowball offer. You've all bought houses, you all know how it works, go back and try again. Try and do everything in your power as leaders of this city to ensure this land is protected. And I'll go back to where I started, it's on Sunday, this Lord Mayor got himself in the courier mail, hugging a koala. If that is going to mean anything, it must mean that where the land is most vulnerable, it is protected. And if the state government won't do the right thing, then it is incumbent upon us as a council to try every means possible to ensure this valuable koala habitat, where there are actual koalas, is protected.
Further speakers, councillor Griffith?
I'm to be misrepresented.
Yes, that's correct, Deputy Mayor, your claim for misrepresentation.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson said that we weren't even interested in speaking to the state. I very clearly said we are happy to discuss the concessional value of buying this land, just not full commercial value.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, very, very interesting. Look, can I just say, from the outset, this is nothing more than game playing. The LNP are here to play a political game, and the people that they don't like are the state. And they've had 15 years in power, and what have they done about this land? How many offers have they put in for this land? Zero. How many times have they raised the issue of this land? You know, this is appalling. There's no genuineness here about the saving the koala population. This is just a big political stunt. I, I believe tonight we should get a motion up that actually results in some action. Let me just be very clear, I support conserving of the bushland and the habitat at Nathan. And despite the, the comments made to the contrary, on the contrary, by several people inside the chamber, they don't know the representations I've been making behind the scenes in relation to this issue. I, I am surprised that councillor Adams still thinks that Tui Forest is in Maruka, it's actually in Nathan. This is a significant piece of land in Nathan. The site has been zoned special purpose for education, and it was originally set up and has been under our city plan zoned for special purposes that back up the work of the university, Griffith University. And I have to reinforce that, yes, the fire breaks are there, and the fire breaks were approved by Brisbane City Council. So, we actually gave the tick off to the fire breaks on that land, and the advice I have is that we are actually working with the state to set up a program of regular burning so that we don't actually need such significant fire breaks into the future. So, let's see the advice I've been able to get from the offices. This, this site has a significant and very healthy koala population, and yes, I have helped fund the group that's been doing some of the work there. These are actually photos of those koalas on that land. They're very healthy. It's a site where the female koalas seem to go and the male koalas follow them down, it's a bit more moist, and they, they seem to breed. That's their sort of breeding spot, and that's where they go to have their joey's. So, it's a significant site. It's seven kilometres from where we are now, and it's a site we should be preserving. I find it incredible every time I drive along the South East Freeway to think these little fellas are just sitting there, not far from where we are. And I really congratulate the gentleman who's been doing a lot of work with this group, that's Brad Lambert, and his group of helpers there, he's really sought to raise this issue, and I know that he's very keen to continue that work around the place. But these are, you know, these are what people come to the city for. They come here not for zip lines, they come here to see our magnificent wildlife and our magnificent bushland. That's why people come to Brisbane, that's when I travel, that's why I go to another city, is to see what, what special things it has to offer. I don't go to somewhere because it's got a zip line. So, let's have a look at some of the issues today. We know this koala population is healthy. I have been working with key people in the community and also with my colleagues at the, at other levels of government. I've seen here, and I'm happy for these photos to be passed around, some of the examples of the, the koalas that are in the forest. Yes, I have written to the Lord Mayor, sent a memo to the Lord Mayor. I have started a petition, and you're all welcome to sign that petition, it's online. All welcome to sign it. I took it to the Chrome Street Festival on the weekend, we had hundreds of people sign it in one evening. Once again, and I get confused about this, I know councillor Johnson, myself, have been raising koala issues in our ward, and it's been met with deafening silence in action, that's out of Oxley, and very similarly, this issue has been met with inaction. But look, I, I went out today and I thought, I'm going to go and have a look at this Carrara Street site. And I had a walk around and got some pictures of it. It's a nice tennis court there.
Sorry, councillor Griffiths.
There's some cleared bushland there.
Councillor Griffiths, please stop. Carrara Street's not listed in this resolution in front of me.
Of course isn't.
Where, where is this place you're talking about?
Point of order.
It's not the subject of this resolution, right?
It has been.
Sorry, point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, point of order, Mr Chairman. Councillor Adams discussed numerous sites across the sea, including this site she mentioned particularly, and I'd certainly say, if you've allowed one councillor, including councillor Adams and myself, to discuss it, to be fair, I'd, I'd ask that you consider it relevant for all councillors.
Thank you councillor Johnston, so, continue councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Just some lovely cocus palms, and also, so I've got this for that side of the chamber, because interesting, you always wonder with the LNP, when they don't show pictures about something, it obviously means something's up. So, for that side of the chamber, just so you can see what they spent $5.2 million on, of ratepayers money, bushland money. I find it sort of amazing that this administration, this councillor, councillor Adams can go, 'That's all right, spend $5.2 million on a cleared block of land that was cleared under our DA, but do not, and we'll buy it back, but, but hell no, we're not paying', and they're not here tonight, it's $6 million, 'we're not paying $6 million for that tree land which has a heap of koalas on it because, oh my goodness, that is so wrong.' What is going on here, the sheer hypocrisy? When I said that to the people on this site today, at Carrara Street, they couldn't believe it. This is appalling, you have black and white, you have a cleared site that's been bought off a developer for maximum profit, maximum profit, it has no bushland on it, it has no koalas on it, then you have another site, full of koalas, full of bushland, that we want to add to a native area, and they don't want to pay for it. This is what's appalling, the hypocrisy in here, the sheer hypocrisy. How dare you have a go at me when you are so hypocritical about what you do? It's interesting here too, here's the figures, here's the figures on the koala spotting on this site that's been done by a team of scientists over the last, since September last year. 261 sightings of koalas on that site. How many at Mount Cravat? Zero, zero at Mount Cravat. The hypocrisy of this administration, the sheer hypocrisy. Anyway, look, I move, I'm going to move a motion, amendment to this motion, I'll pass it round.
Do you have a copy of the amendment?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yep. There you go.
And a seconded?
And the amendment to this motion will be to clarify, and I still, after hearing them speak, I'm still not sure whether they want the land given to them, whether they want to pay a token price, whether they want to pay, they don't want to pay full price, heaven forbid. Let's clarify this, let's clarify this. So, this motion is in line with my petition, and I believe it's quite reasonable, and it states that this council negotiates with the state government to use Brisbane City Council ratepayer, it's not LNP, it's ratepayer, bushland acquisition fund to purchase and conserve the bushland at 18, 19, 41 and 51 Don Young Road and 30 Forest Circuit and 10, 19, 20, 29 and 30 Innovation Circuit and 266 Mount Cravat Road, Nathan.
Seconded.
An amendment's been moved by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Cook.
So, here we have a motion that reinforces what the LNP are saying, but it just clarifies that they have to go and negotiate. And it's interesting, in the past, they've never told us the price of a property, in fact, they won't even tell us the property they're looking at because it's commercial in confidence. And yet today, councillor McLaughlin blurts out that they're going to pay $6 million for it. Blurts it out. No wonder you're not the environment chair anymore, councillor McLaughlin. Honestly, the, the amazing ineptitude of this administration in dealing with the negotiation on getting these koalas protected under our bushland acquisition is astounding. So, this motion states very clearly that you will use residence funds, residence funds, not your funds, it's not the LNP's funds, it's residence funds to protect this koala habitat for the city into the future, and you will negotiate with the state government to do that, like you have done with every other piece of bushland habitat in our city. And I'm sorry if you think that's unreal, because residents don't think that's unreal, and they're signing my petition by the hundreds. and they're signing my petition by the hundreds.
I'll leave that with you, Mr Chair. Further debate to the amendment. There being none, councillor Griffiths Johnston.
Yeah, thanks. I just thought somebody on the LMP side might like to speak to this, given it's important. I've been listening to what's been said and certainly I heard councillor Adams walk back some of her statements a little bit by saying that they were prepared to negotiate with the state government over the...
Point of order, Mr Chair. Claimed to be misrepresented again.
She did, she did. I mean, I got up and said they weren't going to and she got up and did a point of misrepresentation. Are you right? Are you right?
Hey councillors, please stick to the substance of the point of the resolution in front of you.
Yes, point of order, Mr Chairman.
You're the speaker, you're the speaker.
Thank you. Well, I'm making a point of order about the disorderly and rude conduct of councillor Mackay. And I'm not going to put up with rude hand gestures again from another male LMP councillor on that side of the chamber. Now, it's just not on, Mr Chairman, and I would ask that you direct him to stop it.
I didn't see anything, I was listening to, I was facing this direction, listening to the two councillors argue. But fortunately councillor Johnston, we have videotape and I'll review it later, okay?
We do. And Mr Chairman, yeah, he's a real grown up over there, he's contributing a lot.
Councillor Johnston, please, we've been on this for a little while, can you just talk about the resolution?
And I will, Mr Chairman, but what I would just say to you is, I expect...
Are you not accepting my direction to return to the substance?
I would like to.
Please do.
But I am asking that you ensure that male LMP councillors do not engage in rude gestures towards anyone in this chamber.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Owen.
Mr Chairman, in light of that last request, could I request that all councillors in this chamber are treated fairly and that no councillor in this place displays any rudeness or offensive behaviour to others? Thank you.
I agree councillor Owen. I think that courtesy is expected in this place, expected of all councillors, to be directed to all of us equally.
Now councillor Johnston, are you going to talk about the substance of the motion or not?
Yes, that was my plan.
Well, please begin.
Thank you and I appreciate that. So let me be clear. I certainly believe that the state Labor government should be protecting this land and I don't believe it should cost ratepayers money. But the worst possible outcome here is that this land is disposed of, sold, given away. I don't know what they're going to do and we lose the koala habitat. I appreciate councillor Griffiths clarifying that it is zoned for educational purposes and it is zoned, you know, for the university to use. I would hope that Griffith University are a strong voice in advocacy for protecting this land. It is critically important, you know, that all stakeholders here speak up to ensure that valuable koala habitat is protected. And again, I come back to my original debate, which is that we need to keep in mind the purpose of this, which is that we need to protect koala habitat. Now, I don't believe we should be doing that at any cost. But the Lord Mayor has been very clear over the last two months that he's made this his number one priority across the city. And to allow party politics to undermine what is ostensibly a good decision of his would be very disappointing. I urge the Lord Mayor to engage in positive and proactive negotiations with the state government on behalf of our city to ensure this land is protected. Now councillor Adams did say that she wasn't completely opposed to some negotiations with the state. And she got up to specifically correct me when I said that they weren't prepared to do that. So if that is the case, it is critical that you agree to this amendment before us today and you proactively go about trying to get a good outcome for our city. That is what we need to do here. And I would just say that we cannot, we cannot just allow party politics to dictate the outcome here. We have to keep in mind the bigger purpose, which is the protection of koalas who are endangered in our city and the protection of their critically valuable habitat which councillor Griffiths has outlined so well this evening.
Councillor Adams, you have a missed representation.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And again, I clearly stated and it will be enhanced that we are happy to negotiate with the state but not for a commercial value, full commercial value.
Thank you. Further contributions, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly on the amended motion. Obviously, I'm a big supporter of preserving and conserving as much bushland as possible. And I will be supporting the amendment, but I do have concerns about the idea that we should be paying the state government for land that I think the state government should just be handing over for free. I understand the politics of this and I understand that the relevant landowner is trying to get a return on their investment. But I don't necessarily think it is good practice that we accept that the state government should be charging us anything at all for land that the state government should just be preserving as a matter of course. And I think all councillors in this place should reflect carefully on what the implications are of going down that road. There have been, even in my area, sites that are owned by the state government that we wanted as parkland and which, after some negotiation between myself and the relevant state MP Jackie Trad, land was handed over without council having to pay for it. And I think that would be a better approach ideally. And I understand it might be difficult in terms of how this land is currently owned and the structures surrounding it. But it is a bit weird to me that we would use money to buy land off the state government rather than using that money to buy privately owned land and just simply ask the state government to hand over that land for free. So I'm happy to support a motion that calls on this council to negotiate further with the state government. But I really don't think we should be expecting or proposing to pay anything even close to commercial value for the land. Though of course, I think ultimately, I just want to see that bushland preserved and I'd happily see any outcome that achieves that goal. But I just really want to caution against this kind of cannibalizing existing pots of money when we could be spreading that around a bit further. I have a lot of more detailed thoughts on, in general, on the way that the state government continues to sell off assets and sell off bushland around southeast Queensland and I won't bore the chamber with that right now. I also think this council could be doing a lot more in order to protect and preserve bushland within the limits of Brisbane city. So I don't think either level of government particularly has its hands clean in all this. But I just urge all councillors in this chamber to try and avoid the party politics and work constructively on solutions rather than using this as an opportunity to pass the buck or sling mud across the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? There being none, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Mr Chairman, interesting that no one from the LMP spoke. Interesting that no one from the LMP spoke about the amended motion, although it did sound like they're in agreement with it. It did sound like they're in agreement with it. So, Mr Chairman, it is interesting, I believe that the answer to this, if people want a genuine answer, if the Lord Mayor, if councillor Adams wants a genuine answer, then you negotiate. We have to work with other levels of government, we have to negotiate. That's the skill of politics. And we can each go to our barriers and go, they're bad and they're bad, but that's not what residents want. Residents just want a solution to this. They want to know these animals are protected and they don't want party games. All the people who spoke to me on Saturday night, they're not interested in party games. They're just interested in protecting these animals for the future of our city. And they say, what do we pay our bushland preservation fees for? Well, it's for this sort of thing. I will remind people that the administration did pay 5.2 million dollars for a cleared block of land that had no koalas on it. 5.2 million dollars of ratepayer money for a cleared block of land that had nothing on it. And now we have to go and remediate it. So I really think there is a case here to be made about paying a reasonable amount for this block of land. Once again, I would say, go in with a genuine approach to negotiation, do it behind closed doors and get an outcome that benefits us and benefits the state and benefits the koalas of this city. That's what this amendment is about. It's about finding a solution and getting out of the muck, the muck that is being played here tonight. I encourage everyone to vote for this motion.
I now put the resolution. All those in favour of the amendment, say aye. To the contrary, no. The noes have it. Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Are you ready? Ready? Attentants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
The noes have it, the amendment fails. Please return to your seats. Further speakers to the original substantive motion. Anyone at all? There being none, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I look forward to standing for this 10 minutes to be heard in unadulterated silence and no interjection from those on the opposite side because that would be rude and obnoxious. So let's see if we can get through my speech like we haven't been able to tonight. And it's started already. Not 30 seconds, wow. So we heard a lot of verbalising from the councillor for Tennyson. She runs an amazing protection racket for Minister Bailey and councillor Griffiths. Make sure she lays the land easy for councillor Griffiths to come in.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
Look, we've just had a conversation about rudeness in this chamber. I think accusing another councillor of running a protection racket is probably a little bit inflammatory and unnecessary.
I think that's probably within the channel of acceptable.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Johnston.
Look, not only is it untrue, it is defamatory and two, it is an adverse reflection upon my character. And under the meeting's local laws, it is appropriate that that kind of comment is not made and I would ask that it be withdrawn.
Councillor Adams, will you withdraw that comment?
Absolutely not. I have sat here and listened to councillor Griffiths speak for 20 minutes tonight and do nothing but defame me and slander me.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I've drawn to your attention a point of order under the meeting's local law that an adverse reflection has been made about my character and I am seeking your ruling about this matter. Under the meeting's local law, it is your determination and it is up to you to ask councillor Adams to withdraw. So I'm seeking your advice on the ruling, please.
I have asked her to withdraw and she declined. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, then I'm just seeking your advice as to whether you're planning to take any further action against councillor Adams' refusal to comply with your ruling.
All councillors in here are adults who have all signed forms indemnifying council for the things they've said. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As I was saying, I have been defamed for 20 minutes from councillor Griffiths. I was misrepresented at least two times by councillor Johnston, but...
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
I find it offensive that councillor Adams says she's been defamed by what I've said.
Okay.
It's not true.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As I was saying, we had a lot of talk about how this had only ever happened in the LMP ward. There's no money because it's ALP. There is continual comments about corruption around pork barreling, things that reflect adversely on us. And if councillor Johnson is upset that she's associated with councillor Griffiths and that adversely reflects on her, I probably agree. However, what we're talking about here is koala bushland acquisition.
Councillors will be heard in silence. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I note that the councillor for Tennyson is doing the exact same thing that she stood here and accused me of doing while she was speaking.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Strong.
Could you bring councillor Adams back to the motion, please? And still, instead of making remarks about nothing to do with this motion.
There's been a very generous interpretation of relevance in this debate. Councillor Adams.
Thank you. I would love, as I said, to have my speech heard in unadulterated silence, but we couldn't last 30 seconds on that. What I want to reiterate is what is going on here. This is a state Labor asset sale. This used to belong to Griffith University. It is zoned community special purpose, but it has been given to EDQ, the Economic Development of the Government, clearly stated by Minister Bailey last night at the neighbourhood watch. And as we've heard from councillor McLaughlin, there is one and one KPI only, key performance indicator for economic development Queensland, and that is to make a profit. That in anyone's absolute layman terms is an asset sale of this koala bushland. All we are asking here tonight is very, very simple. Conserve it or give it back to us. Very, very simple. Conserve it yourself or give it back to us. And I would think at the very least, an indication that they were happy to conserve this bushland would at least start with it being taken out of the control of EDQ and given to Natural Resources or another department who doesn't have a key performance indicator of selling it off at the highest price. I have to actually rebut the continual comments we heard about the comparison to Carrara Street. I'm glad that councillor Griffiths went out and got some photos of the house on site. Maybe we can use them in the real estate sales when we sell that property in a month's time for a profit to put back into the bushland acquisition money, which I have spoken about many times in this place. I laugh that he says there was no koalas on that site. I dare him to go and stand out in front of my residents in Carrara and Nurrin Street and tell them that they are liars. Tell them, tell them that you do not believe that there was any koalas on that site. Tell them that Carter wasn't mauled.
I just claimed to be misrepresented.
It's noted. Councillor Adams.
Clearly said there was no koalas on that site. We are happy to take action, but I would love to know what that action is. If Minister Bailey can't get Minister Dick to change his mind, if we hear councillor Griffiths at his face value that he's been working hard behind the scenes, that hasn't made any difference either. We got a letter from Mark Bailey. We know that Mark Bailey spoke to the State Development Minister in November last year and he said no. The Chair for Environment, Parks and Sustainability wrote a letter on the 19th of February and he said no. We brought that to this chamber. Councillor McLaughlin stood on that Tuesday meeting and asked the whole of the Labor Opposition councillors to advocate for the koalas and join us in the fight to get this land back. What did we hear from councillor Griffiths at that time? Crickets. Absolute crickets. Again, 26th of February, councillor McLaughlin wrote to Minister Dick asking him to reconsider the asset sale. Please don't sell it to the highest bidder. Have some consideration for the high value bushland and speak to us about it. Exactly what councillor Johnson was urging us to do. We have done that. Guess what the answer was? No. With the comments too about the Campbell Newman Government brought in the legislation and this is what we have to do. All they have to do is hand it away from EDQ. Conserve it or give it to us. I call on councillor Griffiths to get up and speak to his community and make sure he doesn't also run the protection for Minister Bailey, who doesn't seem to be able to get it done. And let's start talking to Minister Dick about getting this bushland conserved. Conserve it or give it to us. Conserve it or give it to us. This is nothing more than a money grab from state ALP government who promised not to sell assets. I hope that Minister Bailey is right and this is not up for sale, but I do not, I do not believe that that is what EDQ has in mind. I totally believe that it won't be sold before October twenty-eighth next year, absolutely won't be sold before a state election next year, but I do not think that is a long-term plan for this land. The Australian Labor Party should hang their heads in shame. Conserve it or hand it back to us. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thanks, councillor Adams. Councillor Griffiths, your misrepresentation.
Yes, I...
Councillor Griffiths, please stick to the substance of your misrepresentation and don't use this as an opportunity to reel it back the argument. Councillor Griffiths.
I just find it appalling that councillor Adams was just so blatant in her incorrect repeating of what I'd said here in the chamber.
Thank you. All right, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Burke. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells.
The journey home to recognise the stolen generation. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders led a procession to City Hall where they were formally welcomed by the Lord Mayor. Cultural and historical ceremonies were conducted to mark the start of a healing process and a commemorative plaque was placed near City Hall, and now, of course, we have plaques right across the city. A very proud history, Mr Chair. Recent events have offered pause for reflection on the place and understanding of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples in our communities. Last weekend, we commemorated Sorri Day and then reflected together throughout National Reconciliation Week. I had the opportunity to attend the Sorri Day event at Kalinga Park once again this year. This annual event, hosted by the Nungar Reconciliation Group, growing each year is an important time for us to reflect on the realities of our past. This year, we heard from Stephen and Jennifer Hart, who travelled from Sherbrooke for the event. Jennifer spoke of her pain at her child being taken from her at birth. This didn't happen one hundred years ago. This didn't happen fifty years ago. This happened in nineteen seventy-nine. Stephen and Jennifer have been searching in vain for the last seven years for their daughter, a daughter they never met but lives on in their hearts. I appreciated the words of the Lord Mayor at the Sorri Day ceremony in King George Square last week and saw the emotion that he showed. Yesterday, we also commemorated Marbo Day, celebrating the tremendous struggle of Eddie Marbo's cause for justice and the coming together of the Australian community in difficult circumstances following Marbo's success. Marbo is now part of the Australian cultural fabric that makes us who we are. If anyone like me remembers the iconic Australian film, The Castle, it's the vibe of it, it's the constitution, it's Marbo, it's justice. The sense of fairness, justice and togetherness is key to who we are. Despite the tough times, it holds us together and enables us to be able to think of and realise better futures. It's also key to the foundation of the Uluru Statement from the Heart, another momentous event in this nation's history, which Australians from across the country celebrated its second anniversary last weekend. Never before in Australian history have we seen something like the Uluru Statement. Thirteen regional dialogues from across the country culminated in the two thousand and seventeen Indigenous National Constitution Convention at Uluru. At this event, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Australians spoke to the rest of us in a way we have not experienced before. Despite the difficulties, despite the history and all of the challenges that remain, all Australians were invited on a journey to fulfil a promise of Australian nationhood and provide a better future for us all. As Stan Grant reminded us during National Reconciliation Week, what an amazing show of faith the Uluru Statement is in the Australian community, and I quote, "A people historically locked out of this democracy are saying they want in." What a profound statement of faith in our community, that a people for whom the constitution was written to exclude were saying that same constitution can hold their dreams. The Uluru Statement blends the ancient sovereignty of First Peoples with the lived reality of the political sovereignty of the Commonwealth. The Uluru Statement from the Heart now has bipartisan political support from our federal colleagues. The momentous appointment of the Commonwealth's first Indigenous Member of Cabinet, the Honourable Ken Wyatt MP as Minister for Indigenous Australians, is another indication of the importance of this document. The Uluru Statement from the Heart asked all Australians to walk with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in a movement for a better future. This was and remains an invitation in the spirit of reconciliation, which has animated the best of us in our communities. The Uluru Statement from the Heart speaks to the sense of fairness, justice and togetherness that makes us who we are as a community, the glue that holds us together. In calling for a constitutionally enshrined First Nations voice and a Macarrata Commission to supervise a process of agreement-making and truth-telling, the Uluru Statement from the Heart has offered an olive branch to all Australians. The facts and truth of our history should not be controversial and indeed need not meet, need not be. Let us walk together as a council with the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community in that spirit of reconciliation to enhance our community in a commitment to a fair and truthful relationship and a better future for all Australians. We have a proud history as a council leading on these issues, let's take that lead again. Mr Chair, I'll finish by reading into the record the momentous Uluru Statement from the Heart in its entirety. "We gathered at the two thousand and seventeen National Constitutional Convention, coming from all points of the southern sky, make this statement from the heart. Our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander tribes were the first sovereign nations of the Australian continent and its adjacent islands and possessed it under our own laws and customs. This our ancestors did according to the reckoning of our culture from the creation, according to the common law from time immemorial, and according to science more than sixty thousand years ago. This sovereignty is a spiritual notion. The ancestral tie between the land or Mother Nature and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples who were born therefrom remain attached there too and must one day return to the, to be united with our ancestors. This link is the basis of the ownership of the soil or better of sovereignty. It has never been ceded or extinguished and coexists with the sovereignty of the Crown. How could it be otherwise? The peoples possessed a land for sixty millennia, and this sacred link disappears from world history in merely less than two hundred years? With substantive constitutional change and structural reform, we believe this ancient sovereignty can shine through as a fuller expression of Australia's nationhood. Proportionally, we are the most incarcerated people on the planet. We are not an innately criminal people. Our children are alienated from their families at unprecedented rates. This cannot be because we have no love for them. Our youth languish in detention in obscene numbers. They should be our hope for the future. These dimensions for our crisis tell plainly the structural nature of our problem. This is the torment of our powerlessness. We seek constitutional reforms to empower our people and take a rightful place in our own country. When we have power over our destiny, our children will flourish. They will walk in two worlds and their culture will be a gift to their country. We call for the establishment of a First Nations voice enshrined in the constitution. Macarrata is the culmination of our agenda, the coming together after a struggle. It captures our aspirations for a fair and truthful relationship with the people of Australia and a better future for our children based on justice and self-determination. We seek a Macarrata Commission to supervise a process of agreement-making between governments and First Nations and truth-telling about our history. In nineteen sixty-seven, we were counted; in twenty seventeen, we seek to be heard. We leave base camp and start our trek across this vast country. We invite you to walk with us in a movement of the Australian people for a better future." Mr Chair, we can lead as a council and I commend the motion to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise briefly just to speak on this motion. It's quite timely motion. Last week, many of us would have read the article by Greg Brown in The Australian titled "The First Indigenous Cabinet Minister Calls For Patience." And Greg Brown quite accurately highlighted the joy, the emotion and the gravity of Ken Wyatt's appointment to Cabinet. From Greg's article, I actually drew a parallel to a traditional message stick that the Aboriginal culture use. As we all know in this chamber, our First Nations people would send messages between different Indigenous groups and nations across Australia, a practice that's still in use today. As the message stick would pass from elder to elder and nation to nation, each Aboriginal group would make their mark. Each mark on the message stick would give greater authority to the message and the messenger. Minister Wyatt's strategic and considered approach, highlighted in Greg Brown's article, mirrors the traditional use of a message stick. He reports in The Australian, he wishes to extensively consult with Aboriginal groups about the definitional understanding of the voice before a referendum...
Sorry, councillor Toomey. Councillors, just a bit of chit-chat in the chamber, please. Can we allow councillor Toomey to be heard in silence? Please, councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll continue. Before a referendum is considered, as each group and each nation is consulted, the discussion grows, the authority of the message stick to Canberra increases, much as the same as a message stick passing from nation to nation. Minister Wyatt said, "The government will not rush to install a voice and a strategic and considered approach will result in a constitutionally enshrined First Nations voice." We have an Indigenous leader in Canberra. We have an Indigenous leader in Cabinet, leading the way forward. And with those thoughts, I would like to move an amendment, Chair. I move the following amendment. A, at the second paragraph, the words "call for" is replaced with the words "consideration of." And after paragraph two, insert the following paragraph. Acknowledges the recent appointment of Australia's first Indigenous Minister for Indigenous Affairs, Ken Wyatt, and agrees with the minister's approach to the proposal recommended in the Uluru Statement from the Heart.
Is there a seconded?
Seconded.
Councillor Hammond. It's been moved by councillor Toomey, seconded by councillor Hammond. Councillor Toomey, I trust there's written copies of this resolution?
Yes. There's an amended motion there. Yep.
Thank you. So that'll just be, as that's been distributed, councillor Toomey, could you speak to your amendment, please?
Chair, as I said in my lead-in, we have an Indigenous leader in Canberra and we have an Indigenous leader in Cabinet. Using traditional methods, as highlighted in the article, the minister seeks to engage the community, Indigenous and non-Indigenous, about the way forward. And this motion that I have, the amendments that I've made to the motion, highlight the minister's intent on the direction he wishes to take.
Further speakers to the amendment. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, look, I rise to speak on the amendment and I ask that it be taken seriatum. So the words "consideration of", which replaced the "call for", and the paragraph relating to Ken Wyatt. I've only been given a copy of the fully amended motion rather than...
So councillor Johnston, I just want to tidy that up. So you're saying you'd like the two items that are considered to be separate, which you just want them taken separately for voting, right?
I've only been given a full copy of the amended motion. I haven't actually been given the amendments, but as I understood it, there were two. One, which is to remove "call for" and place it with "consideration of", that was the first amendment, and the second amendment was the addition of a paragraph relating to Ken Wyatt.
And you're asking to vote on each separately?
Yes, please.
Point of order, Mr Chair. In my eleven years in this place, I've never seen an amendment moved seriatum. It is one amendment, it is not separate amendments that are being put forward, and I would just ask from, it's not a ser... I've never seen someone seriatum an amendment before.
I appreciate what you're saying, councillor Burke. However, under normal circumstances, the original motion would be able to be taken itemised if we chose to, and therefore I'll accept that we'll take the amendment itemised under these circumstances. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. And to the amendments, firstly, I just, I feel that the LNP have tried to do a good thing here, but they've wrecked it with their first amendment. They're playing semantics and I do not support that. I absolutely do not support that. And I will not vote for something that wants to change "call for" to "consideration of". I just feel that is, yeah, it's extremely ordinary in the context and the importance of this debate, and I don't believe it reflects well on the LNP administration. However, I do support the paragraph that has been added with respect to recognition of Ken Wyatt. I'm not fully au fait with his approach to this, but obviously he's in a very unique and special position to guide the federal government's response to the Uluru Statement. So I'd just like to say that I urge the LNP to withdraw their first amendment, which is semantics only and adds nothing to this debate, and ensure that we can all proceed in an agreeable way.
Further speakers to the amendment. Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I think it's a bit disappointing, to be honest, that the amendment is watering down the original intent of the motion that came, the notified motion that came to the chamber. I think it's pretty obvious by now that there's strong support across Aboriginal communities throughout this continent for the process advocated through the Uluru Statement from the Heart. And I think what we see here again is that the political establishment is delaying reforms, delaying necessary and widely supported changes, using the excuse that they will consult further while delegitimising and ignoring the substantial consultation and consensus-building processes that have already happened. And it's very difficult to imagine that the federal government and the Liberal Party is going to do a better job of coming up with a solution than the Aboriginal groups that were involved in that process at Uluru. It seems a little bit patronising to suggest that rather than doing what the Aboriginal community is asking, that we're going to set up... that we're going to set up some parallel watered-down process. And I think perhaps the councillors in this place who are advocating this amendment don't really understand the ramifications of what they're doing. It seemed to me a sensible thing to, the original motion seemed to me a much more sensible approach and would have expressed strong solidarity with the many varied and diverse Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community groups and clan nations that have come together in a rare show of consensus to arrive at something that was palatable to the political establishment. And by watering down the motion with councillor Toomey's amendment, I think we're doing a disservice to all of them. Just wanted to also maybe comment briefly that I don't actually agree with the the strategic path that has been set out by the new minister, Ken Wyatt. Obviously, I'm very excited and supportive of the fact that finally we have a a person who identifies as First Nations in that role. But his particular strategic approach doesn't actually align with the desires and values of a broad range of Aboriginal stakeholders and grassroots community organisations. And so I think the substance of the amendment that's set would suggest that this council agrees with the minister's approach is not something that I feel comfortable supporting. I think actually the minister's approach is going to be one which waters down and newters any meaningful attempt at giving First Nations peoples of this continent a voice. And we end up with some pseudo or pseudo-legitimate chamber or advisory body that doesn't actually go to the heart of what people, Aboriginal people are asking for. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples are calling for meaningful and practical acknowledgement of their sovereignty. They are calling for treaties. That's very different to the kind of the kind of body or the kind of voice that the minister and the federal Liberal Party seem to be envisioning. And I think in the absence of any further detail in this amended motion as to exactly what councillor Toomey understands to be the minister's approach, I think this motion is actually now becoming a lot more confusing than it needed to be. Councillor Cassidy's original motion was straightforward and was much easier to support, even though maybe it had a few perhaps ideological or philosophical flaws that I won't go into right now. But I think this amendment really is a bit of a disappointment and I think it would have been a lot better if councillor Toomey had just left things in their original form. I might also just end by reading into the record the words of Dr Chelsea Bond, an Aboriginal academic based at UQ, because I think the use of the term reconciliation in the motion, I think, requires some scrutiny and critical examination. So I'll just read from a recent article that's titled 'The Uncomfortable Truth About Reconciliation'. Dr Chelsea Bond writes that 'Reconciliation that emphasises equal rights at the expense of our unique rights is not reconciliation. It is just a more pleasant articulation of colonisation. True reconciliation foregrounds indigenous sovereignty and attends to our needs and aspirations, as well as the ongoing practices and processes that impede our ability to achieve them. These must be defined by indigenous peoples who have bloodline connections to the lands on which you are operating on. Our identity as indigenous peoples is after all defined by where we are from and is not well-served via statistical measures within HR departments that see us as diversity projects disconnected from a place. But coming numerically just like them is not reconciliation, it is assimilation. This is not to say indigenous employment is not an important part of demonstrating a shift in relationships between indigenous peoples and non-indigenous organisations or institutions. It is just that it only tells part of the story. And look, the absence and/or particular location of indigenous peoples within your organisation does tell a truth about the relationship it has with indigenous peoples, but it's not a truth about indigenous incapability or lack. Reconciliation without critical conversations about race is not reconciliation. It is window dressing. It is murals on toilet blocks at schools that refuse to embed indigenous knowledge in curriculum. It's artwork on uniforms of a predominantly non-indigenous workforce. It is those nice morning teas that I just don't attend. Accessorise in one's institution with Aboriginal art and culture at the expense of uncomfortable conversations about how power operates in and through our relationships within and outside of our institutions operates to mask the very structure that continues to bear down heavy on our bodies. And I just can't stomach it. Talking about race requires a shift away from centring feelings and intentions, whether that be about Aboriginal peoples or culture, or about whether one feels racism exists. Instead, it demands a preparedness to face head-on the reality and brutality of race as part of the air that we breathe, and then do something about it. It is disruptive and people won't like it. But if social change was easy, we would have solved so many of society's ills. Not talking about a social problem does not eradicate it. Talking about our culture too does not eradicate the realness of race and racism. That ends the quote from Dr Chelsea Bond's article. And I just want to, again, state and remind all councillors in this chamber that when we're meeting on stolen land and we're talking about the legacy of invasion and ongoing colonisation, mere words are not enough. We need practical and tangible actions.
Thank you. Further speakers to the amendment, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the original amendment was good. I think it's something that we could all have supported and did have broad support across the political spectrum at a national level and I thought here in council. But in the interests of reconciliation and moving forward and having a motion that this council will move and will be supported going forward, and the content of that original motion and the intent of the original motion, I should say, is still there, I believe. I do note that both the Prime Minister and Minister Wyatt have both said that there will be a constitutional voice. The consideration of the model is, I suppose, up for discussion. So given that that has been a commitment that both the Liberal and National Parties and Labor have made at a national level, we will support this amendment.
Further speakers to the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you to councillor Cassidy for his approach on this. I do agree with councillor Cassidy that the intent of the motion is there. So we wanted to make sure that going forward, our approach was something that we could all support and we appreciate that councillor Cassidy is taking that approach and his colleagues. I think the thing that struck me most importantly was the quote from the new minister, Ken Wyatt, when he said, 'This is too important to fail'. And I'm very sympathetic to that view because sometimes issues become political footballs. Sometimes issues are rushed. And once you go to a referendum, you're not coming back from that for another fifteen, twenty, thirty years. We've seen lots of examples of that where something goes to a referendum. If it doesn't get up, it then disappears from the political agenda for a long period of time. We can't afford that to happen here. And so the approach taken by the new minister is to build a consensus before that happens, before we have a referendum, so that we can get it up. And I think that is a commendable and correct approach to this because we can't afford to get this wrong and we can't afford for this to be seen as something that is happening too quickly so that it fails. Now, I know there will be plenty of people that say, 'Well, it's taken too long', and I'm also sympathetic to that view. But when we're talking about changing the constitution, there is a very long history of people voting no to constitutional changes. And so I'm very conscious of that fact. And given that history, I think the minister's approach is the appropriate one. So getting a consensus is what we'd like to see, so that this is something that actually happens. This is something that gets the support of the people of Australia. And so, us as elected representatives, we can talk about it a lot. Federal parliamentarians can talk about it a lot. Ministers can talk about it a lot. But in the end, it will be the people of Australia that make up their mind on this issue because they will be the ones that will vote in the referendum and decide yes or no on what is put forward. So we simply wanted to acknowledge the minister's approach. I think personally, and I know the team thinks that is the right approach in this case, so that we can get the outcome, because as the minister says, this is too important to fail.
Further speakers? All right, councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. Just to councillor Johnson's point on semantics. I believe the words, or the changes to the words of the amendment accurately reflect Ken Wyatt's quote in the article. So I'm happy to dismiss councillor Johnson's criticism on that front. In terms of councillor Shree comments regarding that he doesn't agree with the minister's approach, here we have an indigenous leader entering Parliament.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Shree.
Will councillor Toomey take a question?
Councillor Toomey, will you take a question? No, he won't. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. We have an indigenous leader entering the Australian Parliament and entering cabinet, as the Minister for Indigenous Affairs. This is clearly a very important role for him to undertake and I'm quite sure that the minister understands the gravity of the circumstances that he is entering. And that through the consultation process that he wishes to enter to not only his nation but other nations around the country will go through, will definitely come with the outcome that the Lord Mayor mentioned. And the Lord Mayor is correct. We have one crack at a referendum and if we get it wrong, it takes a hell of a long time to fix it.
All right, I'll put each of the items of the amendment separately. The first one is the change of the words 'call for' to 'consideration of'. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Shree. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-two in favour and two against.
The ayes have it. Please return to your seats. Now to the second item, the inclusion of the paragraph identifying Mr Wyatt. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston.
Your division.
And councillor Shree. All those, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-four in favour.
And one against.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. The ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour and one against.
Thank you, clerks. Thank you for that. All right, now, can I draw the council's attention to the amended motion, please? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, I just rise to speak on the motion before us today, the amended motion that's come forward. I just want to place on the record my thanks to councillor Cassidy and the Labor Party for bringing this important motion before council today. Publicly today, councillor Murphy has been critical of the ALP. He put out a terrible tweet, basically saying they have no agenda. Yet again, though, they are bringing forward a motion with significant cultural significance for our community and I want to thank them for doing that. I also just want to put on the record that the Australian Constitution is an absolutely marvellous document in the sense that it provides the foundation for our system of government in Australia. And the good news is, we haven't tinkered with it too much over time. However, it was written in a different era and one where indigenous peoples were not recognised as Australians. And that is a terrible problem that needs to be corrected. It is a shame it's taken, you know, a hundred and twenty years to do so. So Samuel Griffith, who wrote the Constitution, was a very progressive man in his views about the law and governance. And I think, though, he was a man of his time. And if he was doing it again, I feel certain that indigenous people would be recognised in our constitution. I certainly support the Uluru Statement. I believe that ensuring and enshrining constitutional recognition of the indigenous people, the Aboriginal people of Australia in our constitution, is critically important. I certainly hope that the federal government gets on with it. I hope that our new minister, Ken Wyatt, is able to bring consensus and leadership to achieving the aim. And I'd just like to say that, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Makarrata is a Yolangu word describing the process of conflict resolution, peacemaking and justice. That seems to be a very positive approach and I'm very pleased our council is able to support this motion today.
Further speakers?
Point of order.
Councillor Davis is about to be sworn in and I'd like to go see the-
Point of order.
Point of order.
I move that we now go to the dinner for a period of one hour, starting from the time when the doors close and all councillors have left the room. Seconded.
Thanks. I've got a resolution, a motion from the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Richards, that this council now adjourn for a period of one hour for the purpose of dinner, commencing when all councillors have left the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division by councillor Shree and councillor Johnston. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the gates. Clerks, please read the result. So, sorry, mate. We just need a second.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and seven against.
The ayes have it. I'll see you all on any hour.